I'm calling this meeting to order. This is the Tuesday, November 15th Kensington Town Council Meeting. If we can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is a moment of silence. Is there anyone that we should be lifting up? Screen. If we can just bow our heads for a moment. Okay, thank you very much. All right, approval of the minutes. Council, you all received a copy of the minutes. I know I went through it, I did not see anything change. Okay, so can we make a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes from the October 11th Council Meeting.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you very much. I have two agendas, Alex. I just want to make sure, was there a difference between them? Just want to make sure I'm following the right one. The noise library should have. I've got two with the name, so I think I just got two copies. That's fine. Okay, just want to make sure. Okay, so let's move on down to the Mayor and Town Council Audit Committee Report. I believe Anne, you and Connor on the Audit Committee. Sorry, nickname. Okay.
So it's been submitted for review. We did go through both the meetings. At the kickoff of the audit with our Audit Committee and then we reviewed the findings and had a brief. But I shouldn't say brief, it was a good hour-long discussion. And you'll see that what we've presented, that we're in good standing. There were a couple of minor issues that did not rise to a material level, and so we present this for review and approval.
Okay. Okay, any comments?
No, I think, yeah, it was a really interesting conversation. I actually learned a lot from the process. Basically, I think that they wanted us to convey, or we said we would convey a couple messages around the quality of it, that we should feel comfortable that we're making decisions on sound information. And that that is viewed as our report card, obviously, and then we said we were doing a really good job. And these are the people on the Audit Committee.
Our residents on the Audit Committee?
Yes, our residents.
Okay, well, we actually have a member of the Audit Committee. And Leslie, I don't know if you want to add anything to the report. You do, I need you to come forward, but.
Okay, so I would like to thank Leslie, Jeffrey, and Carrie for their service because they were very engaged throughout the process.
They've always been engaged. I really appreciate that they, the amount of time that they've put into it. So, thank you, Leslie. All right, Noise Library renovation project. Matt, do you want to introduce that?
Sure. On Zoom, we should have Hamid Almidwar with Montgomery County and Greg Weedman from Greg Weedman Architects to present a courtesy review of the Noise Children's Library Foundation project. Hamid is going to share his screen for the presentation. The council has a hard copy available in front of him.
Good evening. Do you see the screen?
Yes.
And, okay. I'm trying to go to presentation mode. Do you see the full screen?
Yep.
Okay, good evening, everybody. My name is Hamid Almidwar. I'm Division Chief of Building Design Construction with Montgomery County Government in Department of General Services. I have with me tonight my Section Chief Suresh Patel, the Construction Project Manager Michael K., and I believe Susan Churchill is off to vacation. But also, I have the Director of Montgomery County Department of Public Libraries, Anita Vasallo, and also from Weedman Architects, Gregory Weedman. And I think Lindsay Field is with us tonight as well. Throughout this project, can you hear me correctly? The sound is okay?
Yes.
Throughout this project, we dealt with, which has been taken pretty long and rightfully because of the nature of its historical and the fact that it's a small library, but designer for it had many issues with, it took so long. Funding takes some time, and for all the various reasons, we worked and contributed and got contribution and discussion and collaboration from many stakeholders, such as Public Libraries, Noise Library for Young Children Foundation, Town of Kensington, Planning Commission, Maryland Historic Trust with Maryland Department of Planning, and Montgomery County Historic Preservation Commission. You are all most probably, I'm sure, familiar with the building. It's on 10 237 Carroll Place in Kensington. It's a small library, only 1,075 square foot. And we wrote the proposal score for it, so you could see that it almost tripled. And the building footprint is right now 1,075 a square foot, but the footprint is only expanding so much to 1,660. It's about 600 square foot. It's a two-story library, including the basement and the attic. With that said, I'm going to pass the mic to Greg Weedman. He's the architect with his team who proceeded with the design on this and have been with us for past few years working on this project. Greg? Greg could be mute. Can everybody else hear me?
There we are.
You don't hear Greg.
I apologize. I'm Greg Weedman, Principal of Weedman Architects in Bethesda. We have a firm of nine architects, and we have considerable experience in historic work. We do both residential and commercial projects. We began working on this project in 2012 with the Noise Children's Library Foundation to explore various options for the for the building. And since 2016, we have been working with Grimmon Parker Architects to develop the current design. As some of you probably know, this building, I thought it would be helpful to give just a very brief history because it's a very important building, not only to Kensington, but to the nation, really. The library was founded in 1893 as the first community-funded library in the Washington DC area. It actually predates the Library of Congress by four years. And it was in continuous operation until 1951. Essentially, a single room, which you see here on the left. It had a porch in the front, and then it was built over a crawl space, and there was an attic above under that gambrel roof. But it's essentially a one-room library. In the mid-1960s, against the wishes of many community members, unfortunately, the library was closed. And at the time that the Kensington Park Library was constructed. But in 1970, it reopened as the Noise Children's Library, and it's part of the larger Montgomery County Public Library system. It's one of the very few in this nation that is a library devoted to to children and to as a thriving center for early literacy. So not only is it important to Kensington, but it's important throughout the nation. Can I control the next slide? The let me see if I can.
There we go.
All right, thank you. Many of you, of course, have been there. This is the main reading room. And the building is part of the Kensington Historic District, and as Hamid was mentioning, it's subject to many historic reviews. So we've been through reviews with the Town of Kensington. We've made presentations in the past, over the past 10 years, really, since we were first involved. And the project was submitted to the Historic Preservation Commission and and also the Maryland Historic Trust. So through that process, we are delighted that we were able to submit for a permit in July of 2020. And that building permit was approved in July of '21. The Noise Children's Library Foundation completed its fundraising in April of this year, and we're delighted that we're moving forward with construction bids currently on the project. If we go to the next slide, I can show you. Well, clearly, as many of you realize, the facilities were very much out of date. There was not proper accessibility. There wasn't compliance with current codes. So on top of that, it was a highly constrained project because of the fact that it's essentially a small building on a small traffic island. We wanted to bring the building up into the 21st century, but maintain the character and quality that the building has always had historically. Next, please. So as many of you know, there was a ramp added to give accessibilities to the main level. But the lower level was essentially remained crawl space, and the upper level is only accessed from a small ceiling hatch and is used for storage. So our approach was to try to take advantage of the volume under and over the main reading room. So as Hamid mentioned, we are essentially tripling the size of the library without a visible expansion from the exterior. Next, please. So the site slopes slightly higher to the north, which allowed us to get an entrance on grade into a new entrance on the north side of the building, which will contain an elevator that will link all three levels of the building. And we are also creating a courtyard that is accessible by ramp that is an improvement of the existing courtyard. We're excavating under the building to create a lower level. And the elevator and interior stair allow access to all three levels. You can see how constrained the site was. Really, there was no opportunity to expand the footprint. So the strategy was to expand within the volume of the building. So we're going to be lifting the existing building up, creating a new basement level, and then putting the building down on the new foundation. Next, please. This is the first floor plan. You can see the reading room, the rear two-thirds of the building, that will be restored as the main reading room. The portion that was an open porch when it was first built in the 1890s will become the foyer and stair that connects all three levels. The vestibule that it currently connects to the courtyard will remain. But the new entrance to the north side of the building will be fully accessible and have direct access to an elevator. There was much discussion about the design of the elevator, and it was the consensus of the historic reviewers that a deliberately more modern expression was appropriate to the historic character. So we acknowledged that in the design. Then going downstairs, it's the next slide, I believe. We have a large classroom, two accessible bathrooms. And all of this is, and then two means of egress, even though this is a very small building. We wanted the lower level to be able to function even when the upper portion was closed. So it's designed to allow access even when the reading room is closed. Elevator access, you can see on the left, and the stair that links all three levels on the right. Next slide, please. The upper level, which is within the gambrel roof, will provide important staff space and breakout space for staff. They currently have no dedicated space for their staff and meetings. So that upper level will provide that space for them, and it will be accessed both by elevator and by the new stair. So the entire building is going to have new building systems. We'll have a new mechanical system, new electric. The basic form on the outside of the building will remain. The windows will remain and be restored. So but we'll have three very vital portions of this new center that will be available. So that gives you a broad overview of what's planned, and we're delighted that this project, after a lot of effort by a lot of people, is finally coming to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. As Greg mentioned, we started this project a long time ago. We are happy that we just we're just advertising for the construction, and we're hoping that by April 1, no later than April 1, the construction activity starts, which we will notify the town that we're doing it. Library would be closed for a year. And we're hoping that the construction ends by April of 2024. Then the Department of Library need to go in and set it up and make sure everything is in place for operation. We targeted opening no later than 6/1/2024. With that said, I'm going to stop sharing and see if you guys have any questions, comments. We would be happy to respond.
Council, do you have any questions? What's the project?
No, thank you so much for presenting. This is the first time that I've seen any of the schematics, but I know that we've been briefed before, about a year ago, with some of the external plans. And I just had a quick question around accessibility. I thought when we talked last time, or when we were briefed last time, there was a mention of having a sidewalk added to the new entrance that would kind of be put there, especially if people are accessing it, you need to be able to walk on some sort of path to get there. And I can't tell that there's one there right now. It may be designated, but it's only part of it, especially if that's going to be a new entrance. If you could speak to that. And also, just the glaring omission that we have as a town for any crosswalks to get to this precious resource that we have. There's not only the safety and hazard issues, but also just access and just that welcoming environment. I know you're not responsible, per se, for the crosswalk, but I think it's something we'll need to do as a town to just target where to have those crosswalks. And to note that around this entire triangle, there, especially on the Warner Circle side, there isn't any sidewalk. So there's conversation that we could have around how to build the accessibility with sidewalks and crosswalks. I think that'd be great. And I know it's very late to say this in the process, but I really appreciate your wanting to bring it up to the 21st century while keeping the historic elements, but what have you done for, you know, thinking about, you know, energy efficiency, environmental design, sustainability? Could you speak a little bit more to that? Thank you.
Yes, in terms of accessibility on the site, I think you can see that on the north side, there is direct on-grade access to the new entry. If you enter from the southern side, where those two cars are shown on the right, you can enter the courtyard and go up a ramp and arrive at the main floor of the library. Alternatively, if you're on Montgomery, you can take that path, then again, up the ramp to the same entry. With regard to energy conservation, we are we are removing the interior finishes, which allows us to properly insulate the exterior walls. Although we are keeping the windows, we are going to replace the the screens with storm windows, which will substantially improve the performance of the windows. We will have a a much more energy-efficient heating and cooling system for the building. So from a performance point of view, it will be definitely the 21st century as well.
I think it would be a pretty great opportunity to have, you know, even just exploring with parks and planning, I'm not sure if ideas around rain gardens or you know, having rain barrels, something that is a library, it's supposed to be educational, so anything that we could do to demonstrate, you know, techniques that town residents or others that are visiting could could really harness, I think it's a really great opportunity as you're redesigning the space to think about those educational opportunities. I mean, we have a new green team in the town, and, you know, we really might, we really would, I think it'd be great to work together for whatever's possible to achieve in terms of demonstration projects. But when I was talking about accessibility, I meant less of the car accessibility, because I see the vehicles there, and you mentioned how you can get out of your car and just walk there, but really, it's just about promoting this walkable town and bikeable town. Are there bike racks? You know, how do we get people to cross the street in a safe way to access these points? I think there's a stop signs at the west side right here, right? So maybe there's a way to make the access right there and have a crosswalk there. I don't know, just throwing it out there. Yeah, actually, to build on.
Yeah, I think those are very good suggestions and something that the town should definitely consider. Also, the maybe future development of the Warner Circle and how this building can connect to the park. These are things that the community should definitely consider.
Yeah, hey Greg, this is Connor. I was building on Nate's comments. I'm specifically looking at this schematic on Slide 9, the one that's called Site Plan. And did you all, were you all required, or from county, has anybody looked at this from a traffic engineering standpoint as far as where crosswalks should be located? And then what sidewalks are needed to get, especially to the ADA-accessible areas? Because when I look at this, what I'm seeing is like mid-block where you would cross, which on a curve as well, a curvilinear road, it just strikes me as potentially not the safest place to cross. So I'm not sure where the crossing should be, and then if, you know, sidewalks need to be built on the noise island to connect from those safe crossing places to the, you know, the egresses of the building.
Yes. Well, as you know, all of these roads are Town of Kensington roads. They're not part of the county system. And the points of arrival at the site are essentially the same as they currently are.
It's not to say they're good now, though. I mean, I have a real concern. I've got four kids. As I look at this, like the new ramp that's there that would go into the elevator, you would cross in the middle of a street with a almost blind curve coming north to south. I'm just wondering if it's better to be somewhere else on this island with, you know, we would improve crosswalks to it, but then it just means adding some more sidewalk connections on the library portion.
Right. This drawing may not make it clear, but there is a ramp that connects the whole southern side of the site directly to that entrance. So you can approach the building from the east there, and then you go up the ramp. Not there, go up ramp and you arrive. So that location on the mid-block is you know, one of several arrival places.
Right, but every arrival place is mid-block.
I think the connection of this island to cross the street is needs consideration and review, but we need to elevate that.
Yeah, that's all I'm asking. I just think it may be that those connection points are fine, but, you know, really, we would have a crosswalk, let's say, at the very northeast corner, and then there's just sidewalks that need to get you from that northeast corner down to your entrance.
Right, and that needs to be elevated to our Department of Transportation that is in charge of sidewalks. We are on vertical building. We're in charge of vertical buildings, but then when we get to these points and we hear those things, we connect people to each other so that issue can be addressed because they're capable of studying the traffic, come up with suggestions. And Greg said that these are town roads. If they are, we need to see if any of these are state, county, or town, and which control it is, and we energize those folks to start thinking about those. So, good point, we would mention it to our Department of Transportation and try to figure out who should take that, but that would be so-called Phase 2 or another phase of this project. It's another layer, if you will, of things that needs to be done.
We do own the site, I mean, the streets. The streets around there, they're ours. They're our responsibility. We would put in a crosswalk. I think what we're concerned about is where we would have to put a crosswalk on every side is mid-block, which is not safe. So the question is, like, the one on Montgomery. where we would have to put a crosswalk on every side is mid-block, which is not safe. So the question is, like, the one on Montgomery get it stretched all the way to the point so we could have them at the stop signs that are there. But Lindsay, you know, the area, maybe you could address it.
So the last few years have obviously been focused on the building itself, and we have talked with between the county, the architects and the town, we have had meetings where we've discussed potential areas where we might have speed humps to slow people down. As you know, anyone that's walked past this triangle, people fly around the corner. So having it at the edge of the corner might not be such a great idea unless we change some other things, we being the collective team with the town. So those are definitely up for discussion, but we had not gone through the traffic study yet for the for the library. But we had had some preliminary talks with the town a number of years ago about how we might deal with those situations.
So you're saying that the placement of the sidewalks could be either extended or rethought so that they could match up with a cross, a safe crosswalk. Is that correct? Is that what I'm hearing?
I think that you might need to look at how you definitely need to have a traffic study done about how the traffic is coming in and out of that intersection, set of intersections, because there are four, if you're looking at all of the sides of the triangle or six. So that would be another coordination step with the town. I know that we talked with Sanford about it many years ago.
Okay. Yeah, I just have one more thought on this topic of the traffic study and pedestrian safety, because we do have so many families with young children that regularly visit the library, as we all know. I think it would be great to incorporate talking to those patrons, those parents and caregivers that are bringing young children and parking and trying to navigate getting in and out across the streets just to incorporate their input as well as part of the traffic study.
Definitely. If if I may, this is Michael K. The to reiterate, to reiterate what what Greg had mentioned before, this existing site plan is utilizing the current entrances or accesses to the library. By moving, if in the future you're going to revise the pedestrian access around the island, those those entrance features can be modified and extended. There's not a lot of grade around there, meaning from an accessibility perspective, we, I, I think you could comfortably extend a sidewalk and and put in an additional ADA ramp as you, I want to say, build out or work on the pedestrian access throughout the town in that area.
Right, I think what Lindsay said drives the point home that it it's a small island, a small area, but it's very complicated in terms of traffic safety and pedestrian. And and it really needs engineers to carefully study what are the possibilities, where are points of connection, where speed bumps should be, signs. It it really requires study and collaboration and input from lots of group of people to decide what is the best and safest way to do it. The need for it is there, but it's a whole different study and layer that needs to be added. At this point, this project is about renovating the building, bringing it up to the code and what it needs to be able to be a functional children's library. But obviously, all good modifications around it, good ideas, but it needs to be put in action.
Okay, just just to be clear, are you required to do the traffic study or are you kind of saying that we should do the traffic study in order to know where we should put these crosswalks?
I'm not sure how to respond. On one hand, I hear that you say those are town roads. If they are, probably the study needs to be done by by the town. But I I don't know how I can how would our Department of Transportation be engaged if it is not under their jurisdiction? But it's obviously something that we need to discuss it and brainstorm and collaborate.
Okay, well, we would certainly, if it's we want safe crossings to the library, might be an investment that we need to make as far as having a traffic study. But it would be helpful to know whether the county could assist us in that process, since they probably have more experts.
Sure. That is definitely, we can connect you with with the partner in the Department of Transportation. And I have no doubt that they would offer you any expertise that they have.
Okay, because the county does own the property, so, you know, it would be helpful to have them part of that conversation.
Sure.
Maybe we should try to combine it. I think it was mentioned with whatever is down with the traffic analysis of Warner Circle. Is that going to be too?
I I'm not sure I would mix those two. It may not be on the same schedule.
Okay.
I mean.
So if the town sends a requested desire to engage in such a study and activity, you could either send it to me, you could send it to Director of DGS, you could send it to the county executive. Either way, we all communicated, we we communicate with transportation and we get back to you and that you know what can be done next.
Okay, all right, that sounds good. Counsel, if you don't, if you don't have any other questions, I would like to give the opportunity for anybody online or here.
I just have one more. So you talked about the entrances to the basement are going to be purposely designed to allow that space to be used even when the reading room is closed. So what is the future vision of utility, you know, the utilization of the building? Because right now, obviously, it's only used during the reading room hours for the, you know, children's library purposes. Is the idea that this room will have you talked with Montgomery County public libraries? Or what is the vision for like hours of operation? And and is this going to be a building that's being used more frequently?
I'm not sure if Anita should respond to that or whether I I'm unable to respond to that.
I can. I believe the intention of having the extra space on the lower level of this building is to allow this to be used by the community outside of the operating hours of the library facility itself. Most of the libraries in Montgomery County Public Libraries have meeting rooms that are reservable by the public. These are controlled by a separate agency and county government community use of public facilities. And there is a charge for the use of these rooms. I'm not 100% familiar with the setup of this lower level. Generally, the meeting rooms are accessed initially during the operating hours of the libraries. So that is to say, you couldn't our libraries are open until six o'clock on Saturday, for example. So you could not start a meeting at seven o'clock on Saturday because there would be no way for you to access the building. But within the operating hours of the library and later, generally, the rooms can be used by community organizations. And there are, you know, lists of the community use of public facilities website has all of the constraints and restrictions. So that's my understanding of the intention of this space to also provide more of a meeting area for the community in Montgomery County, not restricted to Kensington, of course.
Yep, great. That's what I was wondering. Thank you.
Does anybody on the Zoom call have any questions? I can't see any hands, so I'll leave that up to Alex. Oh, Joe, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Furman. A very interesting presentation. And and I thought Councilmember Angle really raised some very important points about the pedestrian safety and accessing the the library. I'm just wondering during the expected year-long construction period, what disruption is anticipated or likely to vehicular traffic near this, near this island? Would there be roads that will have to be shut down, for example?
We we have not envisioned closure of any roads. We're trying to confine all construction activities, staging and everything in that island. The only the only piece of this puzzle that we need to solve is where contractors park their vehicles. And basically, without closing any road, without obstacles, they have to work with the town and and park their cars within some distance, maybe temporarily stop, deliver, where all the delivery is just like anything. A truck shows up, they want to deliver material, they put it down, there would be somebody there for traffic control, let people go around it for that 15 minutes, half an hour of drop off. But we are not closing any roads that has not been in discussion. And we do not have proposals from contractors. And part of proposal is that they are supposed to submit their plan for staging and activity on the site. So when we see what they say, how we act to it, we can react to their proposal, but we have not envisioned any road closure.
Okay, thanks. And a final question, if I may. Is is the renovation renovated library? It is, I think the answer is yes. It will be more digital than traditional. Will it not? In other words, more emphasis on contemporary ways of accessing materials rather than shelves of books and so forth?
No, that is not the intention for this library. This is a very specific type of library. It's in the name, the Noise Library for Young Children. The focus of service in this particular facility is for birth up to age five. These are ages in which the development of early literacy skills to prepare children for success in kindergarten is critical. And a lot of that involves learning how to use language and to read with the demonstration of a parent or a caregiver. So the actual space that will be devoted to the collection is not significantly different from what is extant in the building now. There will be early literacy manipulatives as well as the print materials. There is no particular plan to implement a heavy emphasis on electronic or digital resources in this library. Does that answer your question?
Interesting. Thanks.
Okay. I don't see any other hands. I'm sorry. Oh, sorry, Leslie.
Leslie Olson, with a new design and the increased square footage, there now appears to be quite a different program for the building's usage. And I'm wondering how for the after-hour activities, parking has been addressed. Groups that will use that are will be different than people going during the day with children. If you could talk about the anticipated areas that they will park for the use of that after-hour available space. Thank you.
Excellent question. This this has been in all of our minds since we started talking about this library, but the the fact of the matter, which is pretty obvious by looking at this footprint, is that there is nowhere in this island to create any meaningful parking, let alone just just an offshoot of a street for one car to park. So historically, all the patrons either took the public transportation or they just like an urban area, used it and parked on the streets. There is no no proposed solution for any additional parking availability other than what is available because there is no solution unless we really go a very creative dig the ground, go down and make it a a whole different type of project, which I don't believe anybody can afford it and create underground parking. But since that is such a such an aggressive idea, we we did not envision that. The whole goal was to renovate the building and save it. It's a historical building, save it, make sure it doesn't deteriorate, put it in good use, big it up to code. And in doing so, upgrade the building systems and make it a better accessible. That was basically the limits of the scope of this project. It didn't go beyond the triangle that you see because of feasibility of it.
Right. Okay, thank you. It's not a large space. What's the square footage in the basement?
I mean, it's roughly 1,000 square feet per floor.
I'm sorry?
It's approximately 1,000 square feet per floor.
Okay. But the, yeah, the meeting, that does it, that includes the bathrooms and the other areas, so.
Right, yeah.
Right. Anita, part, correct me if I'm wrong, but part of the reason for the classroom is also to split the story time so that you can have the library operating during story time.
Well, yeah, that will definitely be a benefit to be able to use that space as a programming space for storytimes and other activities for the children who are using the building. We also anticipate using that space in order to act as a potential training facility for the children's staff of the library system itself as well as parents and caregivers of young children. So we see a multitude of uses for the space on our part. But as was noted, you know, it will be available outside of the operating hours of the library to some extent for other uses. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Could we ask the the developers of the Warner Mansion to have some overflow parking as a public benefit?
Well, they will have parking on the site for the park, so I would think that that would be available. But yeah. Yeah. I mean, also, Town Hall is not that far away. I'm not sure at night, you know, people would want to park that. But I know we do have some families that park here for the Noise Library during the day.
And you can mark.
Right. So there there are options. And I I don't think it's going to be that popular of a meeting space because it's small. It's not a very big space. Okay. All right, well, I don't see any other hands. I don't think the council has any other questions. If you have nothing more, really appreciate you coming out. And I I sincerely hope that we're able to get the project started in April of next year. That would be great. This has been a long haul. I know for Lindsay, your kids are like graduating for college. I know they're not quite that old, but it's.
No, they're in high school now, so.
Yes. Project finished. That would be great. And for us older set, we'll be able to see it too, get it done, so.
But thank you for inviting us. We definitely keep you posted about the bit on construction time. We keep the line of communication open during the construction about issues that we may face with.
And that would be really helpful. Councilmember Bartram had one last thing to throw in there.
I was just gonna say, unless anybody disagrees with me, I think I I didn't hear anything from anybody. I was just gonna say, unless anybody disagrees with me, I think, I, I didn't hear anything from anybody tonight that would delay this project or subject it to additional review. Anything about cross blocks and curb cuts is, can be handled later. And, and so everything about this project should proceed to bids and construction.
Yes, we fully support the project.
Thank you.
Thank you for inviting us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, let's see, we have the State Highway Administration update number three.
Can we divide and conquer? I wasn't there for the first agenda, I think a couple of minutes late. Darren, do you want to do the rapid flashing beacon? We had about twelve.
Yeah, a lot.
Twelve items in the list that's growing with SHA. Which is good. It's a good sign. We're engaged with them.
And we are dedicated to a quarterly meeting with them to constantly get the updates and to give them reminders.
Next one coming sometime in January.
Yes.
So, um, Darren, if you could do the rapid flashing, flashing beacon on Wheatley and then the speed feedback system. I came in the middle of that and then I can take maybe.
Do we want to review every topic or just kind of do a generalization?
I don't know. What do you want to hear?
Sure like to hear about the rapid flashing beacon.
I know, that we've been waiting on.
I also wanted to too because I didn't.
Years.
I missed that part.
I was trying to pull up, Alex, you, you shared with us the, the meeting summary. Any way we can get that, so I'm not.
Wait, from this, from the SHA meeting?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought it was MTC. I didn't see. That's the next item. Alex, did you see that one from SHA? Well, maybe I can just identify the issues we talked about and if you want to hear more about any of them. So we've talked about the rapid flashing, flashing beacon on Wheatley. That's been on discussion for a while. This speed sign driver feedback system, which our inquiries have initiated an entire new rule or guidance that they've issued. So we can talk about that if you wish. Washington Street for full signalization, the issue, we talked also about this in the MTC meeting, where we got clarity from that, a little bit more clarity from them on that. Uh, issues in and around Flyers Mill, Connecticut Avenue intersection with queuing with long-term solutions in that whole area leading up to University Boulevard. Um, and just in terms of traffic flows and, and improving pedestrian bicycling safety. We did raise a point again around Connecticut Avenue's speed reduction to drop the speed limit request, to drop the speed limit to twenty-five miles per hour through town there where it's currently thirty. This issue around reducing a lane on University to a biking bicycling lane and a wider sidewalk. Uh, what would be called a road diet that was discussed also. The Knowles Dietrich intersection where people are crossing at the unmarked crosswalk and just trying to understand a little better how we can improve what bicycling and, or excuse me, especially pedestrian safety there. Uh, and we raised the issue, we had two new agenda items. There's all of those we've been discussing with them last couple of meetings. But then we also raised the issue around the Connecticut Avenue Bridge and potentially implementing one of the recommendations from our TLC grant, which was to build a separated side path for bicyclists and pedestrians and people who are, you know, rolling in, in some way or way, shape or form. Uh, and asked them if they would be supportive of us doing that. And basically their feedback was yes, we would support you with that. So it's basically on our, on our, under our our, our jurisdiction to move forward with it in their coordination. In addition to that, on the, on the bridge that crosses Connecticut there, Tracy raised the point of a mural, whether they would support us putting a mural there for the hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the BNO Railroad.
In Montgomery County.
In Montgomery County, and they were also supportive of that. Does that cover everything?
Yes.
I think that was pretty much everything.
All right, so we're happy to answer questions. Darren, Tracy and I were there for, I was there for like all but five percent of the meeting.
One meeting. Um, I believe the, the, the light, the flashing beacon at Wheatley is coming. They, they promised. I know it's been a couple of years, but it is, it is going to show up. So whether it'll be before January, I don't think so, but it is, it is still.
Do you think within this, you know, by like next spring? Are we talking, are we saying twenty twenty-three?
I'm not putting any money on, on what they're gonna, it's kind of like the median that they tore up, you know, five years later, you know. You know, something that the former mayor had asked for finally showed up, you know, after five years, almost six. And we really didn't even know what they were doing. It's just they finally got to that. Um, but it is still on their, on their list and it's, they say it's gonna get them. So I think the the bridge would be on the east side
Yeah.
of the, of the traffic bridge and it would be separate. And I know a lot of the hangup with CSX would not allow it, but Matt has talked to somebody at CSX and they would allow it. So now you still have to get the funding for it, but it would be next to the bridge, but separate, and it would include a bike lane as well as pedestrian. So, um, that would get you from, and, and actually that cross at Connecticut and Howard is so bad when people are crossing there. If you're turning left off Connecticut, you don't see people until you're literally on top of them.
Yes.
And it's so dangerous. So, um.
So it's the idea that pedestrian bridge would come north to south and then we would have some sort of pathway along the north side of Howard?
I think you'd have to add a pathway there.
Yep.
Um, and then maybe the crossing, I don't know how exactly, it would have to come further down. So at least if you're turning onto Howard, you have an opportunity to not end up stopping in the middle of Connecticut Avenue as people are coming at you. But I'm not sure how fully safe you could make it.
Well, and I just, looking at that spot the other day, noticed the bus stop right there where people have to stand and there's no safe way to get to that bus stop.
Right, right. Although I think, are you talking about the bus stop at the, where Hawkins is right now?
Safeway on the.
Yeah. Yes, there is no, there's no sidewalk there. Yes, that's crazy.
And the idea is that it would tie in on the north side to the new development there, the crossings.
And the bike lanes and all that that are.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, two, two issues that, and then a bigger issue, I just wanted to ask for your feedback, for the council's feedback um, that I think are worth flagging in our conversation was they did mention that this road diet, in the road diet on University, that that the county is considering doing a bus lane pilot.
Uh, one of the rapid.
Rapid bus lane pilot. That would just be a pilot. It would go up and then be taken away and they collect data. So I think we need to.
From where to where?
So any, they, they clarified that any of these road diet discussions are from Lexington North or Lexington East. So it really would be out kind of closer to the edges of, of our town boundaries. Um, but that the county, we haven't been notified by the county, but they did flag it to us, so we should probably get views on that. And then the other issue was, they clarified, I think it would be worth hearing your views on the Washington Street crossing. They clarified that why they started to look at the full signalization there. It was because we requested them to look at adding a south sidewalk, a crosswalk there to correspond with the north side. And basically that then got them ambitious and they started studying, well, why don't we just, they just basically ran with it and but well, we could look at full signalization. And it will, you know, I think it would require us to either say we want it or not, right?
It would. I mean, the, the gentleman from SHA that spoke to us said it wouldn't be easy to get. So if we said, no, we don't want that, he's, he'd be like, okay.
Yeah.
But we would not get that second crosswalk. I think it's one of the, it's one or the other.
One or both, yeah. Neither or both.
Right. So I think that's a decision we have to make is, because that was on your walking group's recommendations uh, in order to get that second crosswalk. I mean, it is ridiculous that you cross from one side to the other side to go across and then you run out of sidewalk and you have to go the other. I mean, if you're going north on Connecticut, it works. If you're trying to go down Washington Street, it doesn't work.
No.
If that's your goal is to keep, you know, going down Washington. So.
We did receive feedback from the residents in the MTC meeting that they were generally fine with how things were.
Right.
Um, and he, he was very open about it probably increasing side traffic to the areas on both sides of Connecticut there. Uh, but it would free up, it would make it much easier to turn coming out of Washington Street on both, both sides, turning left of Connecticut to go north, coming out of the Pitchfork or coming out of this area on Washington Street going south.
Right.
So, neither trade-offs. It's just something I want to flag as, as, as issues that I think we should probably discuss.
Well, as the Mobility and Traffic Committee, uh, they didn't make the recommendation, but
No.
It's, are you wanting us to put it on an agenda in December to?
I think, Darren, what do you think? Should we put it on the agenda or just?
I, I, given the fact that we didn't ask for full signalization and that was sort of them just thinking they were being helpful, I, I would probably drop the issue. Because.
How do we drop it?
Well, we have to tell them, no, we, we don't want the signal there. I mean, I, so.
So we kill it now or we?
Well, yeah. My question would be of the various crosswalk recommendations, sort of where does this rank in terms of importance and using our influence for ones that maybe are more important overall to put it, like Knowles and Dietrich or some of the other places we're talking about.
My sense is this was one we discussed in the working group as a nice to have.
Yeah.
And the other thing I, I think is the case is that having SHA fixed their MCT, I don't know which one it was, fix the timing of that light and then the button.
Which happened, yeah.
It addressed most of the concerns we were hearing.
Yeah.
Suddenly you push the button and you actually had a red signal that would let you cross safely.
Twenty seconds.
As opposed to getting frustrated and crossing against traffic. So to me, I think we, we most of the issues has been addressed. I just wouldn't prioritize it.
Okay, and crossing Washington from the north, from the south to the north and then from the north to the south is not that difficult. It's not like you're waiting for a lot of traffic to get to those other sides. All right, so um, sounds like we want to advise the the gentleman that we met with at State Highway that we want them to drop it. Um, does anybody in the audience have any questions regarding that direction in address? Leslie, go ahead.
Um, back to a flashing light, something to do with Wheatley. Can you elaborate on what that is and where on Wheatley?
It's, it's at Metropolitan. It's the flashing beacon. So when people are crossing, it alerts people that somebody's in the crosswalk.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. It's not at Wheatley and Oberon. We were actually had asked originally too for another one at St. Paul and Metropolitan, but ended up getting the four-way stop, which has been very helpful. So we would like to have the beacon still, which they had offered to give us too. So we'd like to have the one at Wheatley and that's the one we keep pushing them for. Yeah. Not seeing any hands, so.
So can I just ask for, for concurrence on moving forward? I would like to draft a letter to SHA, um, other transportation partners to get their support with implementing some of these recommendations on the TLC grant.
Okay.
Including the bridge and, and also, I don't know, they basically, we had this discussion around who do we, who takes the lead on this long-term fix of this, the whole, the Y part. And they said, well, it's basically the town we need to initiate it. So I'd also, in some way, maybe it's a second letter, like to ask our council, county council.
I'd ask our state delegates because funding for that bridge is gonna have to come probably from them.
Right, but that's just, it's not just the bridge, it's that whole studying at the Summit Avenue Extended Terminus and then all of that.
Right.
So I think we need to direct it to SHA, Director Conklin, maybe county council members, but just about getting a forum.
Right.
And I don't know if it's the, the bicycle pedestrian priority area plan. I don't, maybe it's part of that, but it's also, we just need to get that conversation going. So maybe I could take a stab at that too.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I, I, I don't want to give the county another reason to defer Summit Avenue extension. I, I, it's an absolute certainty that in the process of designing the space too of Summit Avenue, they will address pedestrian accessibility. It's inconceivable with the administrative load that we have there, that they would not address.
Well, we had a full meeting last month of.
I just don't want to introduce things like reorienting Concord Avenue or, you know, it, it I think they will address it. And then there will be, just like there was Phase One, there will be, you know, public engagement on Phase Two, where if we feel like they miss something, we could address it. I just feel like there's a little bit of a hair trigger, especially in the county executive's office, but overall to pump this with any excuse down the road. And so I'd like to just.
Maybe we can work together on the letter to make sure we craft it carefully.
I'm, I'm happy to do that. I just, I, yeah, like I said, I would like this to happen before I die.
No, but also since you mentioned the county, I, I suggested enough that we set up regular meetings events with DOT as well, like SHA, so I think we're gonna try to get.
Okay. Would that be with Michael Palin or would that be with somebody else?
Yeah, I have no idea for this.
Okay. I saw the little island on Flyers Mill. It looks good.
Yeah.
In front of boy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's good.
We're, we're compliant now.
We are compliant. Yeah, and I think.
Thirty years.
Kengar is happy with it.
I would not receive any feedback.
Okay. Well, that's good. No news is good news.
You also, we painted the crosswalks again.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes.
And the center line of, of Howard.
Howard or?
Howard between Flyers Mill and Summit will be redone.
Okay.
Uh, it's pretty much gone at this point. So they're gonna redo the crosswalk right coming out of Chapel Center as well.
Okay.
So, maybe, maybe before next week.
We've got a lot of good roadwork done. On the sidewalk on Kaiser Place is great. Um, there he still needs a little bit of cleaning up, but it's, um, yeah, I've seen a lot of people actually using that sidewalk. Um, it would be helpful to get the porta potty off the HOC field property.
Me allegedly.
Actually be nice to just get rid of it in general.
To that point, looking back at the Washington Street, is there can, I mean, it, depending on what the letter is that we go forward with, but if we're gonna leave it as is, can we get them to stripe the crosswalks north and south?
Along Connecticut.
Right, along, you know, yeah, connecting the north side and south sides of Warner.
Can we do that?
I prefer they do it.
Yeah.
Okay.
They're very happy to put down striping. They feel that that's a really big deal.
I mean, I'm looking at, at, at pretty much every other intersection. Now there's some faded one, but they have, um, they have the marked crosswalks. And I just think that, that since you have to make that kind of Z movement to go north, south, east, west, it'd be nice to, for pedestrians and, and visual indicator and reminder to drivers that that is a pedestrian crosswalk.
So maybe we tell the gentleman, we've decided to drop it, but we'd like, we would really like to have this crosswalk.
Yeah, they can just put that in an area white contract.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, they're, they're able to do that.
Great, great.
Right. Anything else, Nate?
No.
Okay.
You can test again though.
Yes, the Mobility and Traffic Committee.
Darren, you can talk a bit more on this one and then I can tell them to guess. Or do you want me to go again?
No, I just lost the document.
Just. Are you good?
No. I mean, it, it's actually, we, we talked about, you know, kind of updated the committee on our conver- the committee on our conversations with that's S H A and then recommended a few issues be brought to the council tonight, which are on the agenda. reducing street limits in town, we did radar speed sign on Metropolitan, which we're we're still working on. We've talked about having officers conduct more concentrated enforcement, including with stop signs in certain intersections. And then what's on the agenda is, right, I don't know if it's on, I don't know if the speed has on the agenda. Speed hump is sort of a, I I felt it is something that would require a petition of the residents, but I think that would go forward. And then there's the um the changing signage uh at the intersection of of Hadland Carroll, which is later on the agenda. So it's basically, we that that meeting built on the meeting with S H A.
So. Yeah, I think, and then I think you raised maybe a.
I mean, well, I I think just for for the general audience, what we're trying to do is if we have a meeting with S H A, um we're trying not, we don't um make decisions there because it doesn't involve the level of transparency that that we wanna live up to. So if we get an idea that on on a call that isn't a public meeting necessarily, we we wanna take it to the committee and then we wanna take it to the council. So that's why it seems redundant, but that's why we're doing this.
Well, it's also a way, that of things that we have been agreed to that we just keep nagging them, bringing back to their attention. That's mainly what it is.
Yeah, yeah.
Is, okay, you promised us this, we all wanna do it, so where is it? So.
I had to say the um, I've seen, we asked for the enforcement increase in enforcement to be targeted to bus stops, stop signs. And I've seen it, at least in our neighborhood. Big book side, so I think they, our our officers ramped it up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sorry too.
The citation numbers are up. Pretty good. Yeah. Darren, did you wanna say anything about the McComas?
I mean, I can mention it just so that people, I mean, I don't think it's gonna take anybody by surprise because I've been on this for years now. Um the the advent of Waze and Google Maps has shown people a workaround for the traffic restriction. Then send them down St. Paul, up McComas, and then back on Farragut, back to St. Paul as a way to avoid the rush hour traffic restrictions. Um it not only took what was sort of existing as people, local people who knew the workaround. Um but it's it's magnified because that, you know, it's it's um Waze telling people, hey, avoid the intersection of University and Connecticut by taking these little residential road. The residents of Kensington Heights have sought relief from the county because of the inadvertent consequences that our rush hour signs cause for that end of Farragut. Uh so the county can solve it, but if we don't believe the county will do it effectively, we we have the option. We have a couple of options that were considered for that that area. Nothing is in a proposal at this point. Um I think it just takes sort of creativity about where we put the signs to shut down this workaround and and the flow, which basically renders these rush hour restrictions um here in consequence.
Well, the.
And we want the neighbors, especially the neighbors in the newly annexed part, to be heard because um it affects them.
Well, between McComas and uh Farragut, that those residents aren't experienced the traffic because people are going around it.
Right.
And half those residents, the ones on the east side are in Kensington Heights, the ones on the right side are in the town of Kensington. So they're enjoying, you know, the less traffic, but once they've made that turn on Farragut, the rest of St. Paul Street is getting all that traffic. Is that correct?
And and the goal of the signs was to keep rush hour traffic on the main roads. To to not let, not to not encourage University Avenue, the Boulevard uh traffic from cutting through residential streets on their way to wherever they're going. And so it, I think the intent was all of St. Paul would benefit from that those signs. In fact, as you point out, there's only one block that's benefiting because the traffic is doing a big workaround and coming back to St. Paul, continuing down St. Paul. So yeah, it's something that I think we just have to address in light of sort of like information age, telling people how to to cut through.
Right, we also have to be careful that people that do live there have a means in which of getting home.
Sure.
That's a.
Why, and that's something that we, every time we propose this, we we have the same discussion on the list serve and in the town news. Oh, can't we exempt local traffic? And the answer is no. So the benefit is that you cut down rush hour traffic through your neighborhood. But the downside is it applies to you too.
And and just so people understand, the reason for that is that we receive money from the state and from the county to maintain our roads. So we can't, you know, make them exclusive just for us. And I don't think we really wanna stop receiving those funding sources to maintain our roads. Okay.
But just for the sake of it, Matt, we put a counter up there recently. The volume of cars surprised me. On a daily level, how many cars were we tracking coming south on St. Paul?
I don't remember the number. We were surprised. It was like eight thousand. It was the speeds that made us concerned and why we went forward with the speed home. It was the highest speed totals we ever received in the town on a traffic analysis. It was almost thirty miles an hour because they're coming off University, they're making that turn and they were going right into the intersection.
So that's speed hump every ten feet.
Yeah.
Make it really annoying.
But I mean, that that intersection is gonna be reconfigured at some point um once we do this storm drain analysis, we have.
The one at the Comas?
Yep, McComas.
Decatur? Okay.
Right now, it's it's got some sightline issues. It's not, it's it's offset slightly.
Yeah, Decatur and McComas don't line up.
Existing storm drain inlets are not capturing enough water from the park. Um we're looking at maybe running a storm drain up along the park and then getting maybe like a yard or a field inlet from the park to get water into it. Um we spoke into the county, they've they've been pretty receptive to the possible project, but I mean, it's a large scale design.
Yeah.
It's not a, you know, six.
It's not an easy fix.
Yeah.
Okay, and I I I wouldn't say, I think the answer to this comfort is for the county to put a traffic restriction at McComas and Farragut.
Yeah.
It's just that they don't think, they're they're not as nimble and as responsive as we are, and so they require data and you know, uh so.
What kind of restriction would you put?
I would put a do not enter sign at the at at the end of Farragut, so the traffic on the Comas cannot come down Farragut. Again, this is outside of town, this is county road. Once you do that, you you face the towns do not enter signs on St. Paul and you face a do not enter sign at the end of Farragut off the Comas, so nobody can do that. That would shut it down. We just don't run the county.
Right.
Yeah, there's, uh so talking to nearby neighbors who live up there. Several things have exacerbated this. One is Drum Avenue, which used to connect from University all the way down to Flyers Mill. They took a midsection out of it, created it as a pedestrian footpath specifically to disconnect Drum, that connective tissue from University all the way to Flyers Mill, which leaves St. Paul as the only way to do that. But any restrictions put at St. Paul, whether it's a no left turn off of University, presumably most of the traffic is westbound on University in the morning hours. It, uh you know, what I'm trying to think is, does that forcibly just push it back to Hobson and push it back to Drum? Because the neighbors I've spoken to have said, it's not just St. Paul. That people are dropping off of University as far back as Drum, come flying down, and then they're flying down McComas. And they know about the restriction at St. Paul, so then they make the turn.
On Farragut.
Onto Farragut, um which is a tight street, many, much of it is street parking for the houses there. Um a lot of little kids, but you know, it unfortunately, they're trying to shave a minute or two off of a morning commute. And so to Matt's point, some of the speeds that we're seeing are just, I mean, they're excessive, they're beyond excessive for the configuration of roadways.
And and I mean, you you make that point well. I I don't know how long it spends since Drum was open, but it's it's one of those things where you squeeze a balloon here and it it expands here. And if if they want us to open, St. Kensington Heights wants us to open St. Paul to all the traffic in the world. And I feel like that's not sharing the burden of traffic when when Drum is closed off. Um and and so so I presented the county solution, one solution that we could consider. You know, putting it through the various process in public um notice would be any traffic coming down Farragut when it gets to St. Paul again has only an option of turning right, going back north on St. Paul. Could not go straight up Farragut, could not turn left on St. Paul. That would burden the residents of the area, including me, who's one of them, but you know, I I I walk my dog up and down that area and that the car streaming through the morning rush hour is astonishing.
Hmm.
I mean, it's a, it's a, it's like a traffic jam on that. Yeah, we kept, we talked about traffic coming around curves. Farragut is curved there and it's going downhill. It's backed up traffic.
Do you get the same results uh in the afternoon as well?
No.
No.
It's just a morning, morning issue.
Yeah, and it isn't, I mean, as I looked at it outside my front door at St. Paul and Flyers Mill. I mean, it, the southbound traffic will queue up sometimes eight, ten, twelve cars deep. And it's all, and you know, it it, this is not just residents leaving north side homes, is the other.
Do you think it's because they can't make that darn left from on Flyers Mill to head down, I mean.
To Metropolitan.
Yeah, to go down Metropolitan.
I think that's part of it. I think they've learned that they they can shave considerable time off. They roll the dice with whether or not an officer will be there.
Right.
They can come straight down St. Paul, uh roll a few stop signs and then they're they're out.
They're out on the.
Yeah.
Or Flyers Mill, depending on which way, but yeah.
So has there been a recent meeting with the neighbors and the public? I mean, I know there have been these ongoing conversations to talk about potential solutions.
With like the Kensington Heights Civic Association, nothing official.
Yeah, I mean, I've I've, again, it's been years. So so we dealt, we were trying to deal with that. And then the pandemic, which solved all the trash shelves. And then the traffic came back and and throughout that time, I've pushed Kensington Heights to come up with a solution. And there's a little bit of tension in Kensington Heights about what the solution is. People who live on that strip of Farragut are apoplectic about the traffic that they face. Nobody who lives on Drum wants to open it up to traffic. Nobody wants, nobody lives in Kensington Heights, wants to completely shut off that workaround because they use it to as well. So there's self-interest all over the place up there and in my neighborhood.
But we we did bring this up on our S H A meeting about that left turn onto Flyers Mill extending, you know, the holding area.
Yeah.
And because basically the holding area becomes the two lanes, so you really only have one through lane.
Right.
Um, we were told that it would really affect the left turn, the three lanes that are turning left to go north on Connecticut Avenue. That they would have to
Take.
Take some of that. And they didn't feel like that, then that would cause a problem at the night time. Uh because that's where probably ninety percent of the traffic is headed up Connecticut, not up to University. So that was their take on that.
Wait, they believe, so to increase this southbound queuing line.
You go up.
Yep.
You would have to take.
Right where they put the new paddles.
Have to take these.
They would have to eat into that other lane.
But if you look, it's, I I was looking at it with the paddles. It's actually very long. I don't know if, I mean, they said, I thought they said they would look at it because we asked.
I think they will look at it again and we can bring it up, but they they didn't sound very optimistic that they would be able to, but gosh, they just need to come out and see the problem with the backup. And it's not a matter that you wanna get more car, you just need to queue more cars so they're not taking up two lanes going or uh to go um
Southbound.
Go southbound on Connecticut. And that's what's happening.
Mixed with asking them to pu- put in a marked no U-turn.
Oh, yeah.
It.
The paddles.
That's what the paddles are doing. That's what the paddles did.
No, that's, I'm talking at Connecticut and Flyers Mill.
Oh, oh, right.
They, you know.
We haven't asked that yet, but.
They did it at Howard and Connecticut.
Yeah.
But they didn't do it, yeah.
Which now they go down to Knowles.
Yeah.
It is a a gas expanding.
It is one of those things where, yeah, you take it away in one spot, that's just go on down the next. That's that's why traffic restrictions don't always work because they just move the traffic somewhere else.
That's why we need the long term study on this area without postponing the Summit Avenue extended, because it's all, they're all interlinked.
Yeah.
For the flows of people, traffic, walking, biking, everything.
Okay, well, I think we've exhausted this um topic.
Yes.
We're looking forward to it.
A visionary ones who proposed a flyover.
Yeah. Uh, I'm not seeing any hands in the audience, I'm not seeing any hands on my screen here, so we are going up. Uh Joe, did you have a question?
Yeah, I do. Um fascinating discussion about north side uh traffic problems. I wonder if there has been any discussion or any discussion being planned by the Mobility and Traffic Committee about um uh maybe dropping the left turn restrictions on certain streets in uh the south side of town, Kent Wake, Kensington Parkway and Frederick Avenue. These are locations I've mentioned uh several times in the past. And um uh Councilmember Angle and I have spoken about this offline and uh nothing really serious, but uh one possibility would be to drop those restrictions, those left turn restrictions, because nobody's complying with them and nobody's enforcing them. So um is there any um any thought at all about uh addressing that south side issue in Ken?
No.
I don't think we've talked about it during the meeting.
No, it didn't come up.
And was it, I mean, I think it was discussed that we would need to ramp up enforcement um in those areas. I I mean, I can, I comply, I comply.
I comply.
With those restrictions.
Um when you're in that part of town.
There was also a a new restriction added, right, to not do a you, you know, U-turn in that area.
At Calvert.
At Calvert. Um and I know that you bring up issues of enforcement quite often, but I think it's still on our, it's still an area that is.
So we're focusing on the stop signs to the end of the calendar year. When we focus, but it is on, it is on the enforcement.
Yeah, I mean, it should be enforced um when, you know, but again, the resources are.
Yeah, right, so the limited enforcement means that compliance is very erratic and and in fact, there's almost no compliance. So um you and I have talked, Councilmember Angle, about maybe the the best option is not to try to do the enforcement and just just let things go. I'm not sure that's the best answer, but I'm wondering if there's any uh uh intention to discuss this. I I hear no, but uh it probably wouldn't be a bad idea.
I would make two points. One is that um in the past, and I'm I'm thinking of Ken Levy, when he advocated for removing that restriction, we met in the Traffic Committee and we said we would like a a petition from the area. And we've received no petition. So without the petition, I'm not seeing a reason to move forward. If we got the petition though, I would want to remind people that one of the reasons we're facing the north side traffic restriction is because Waze knows that that workaround is available. It knows that given the, you know, that all the traffic signs are inputted into Waze and that times are input, I put them in myself for the west side Pitchfork restrictions. If we take away that sign at Kent, then somebody's gonna update the Waze maps and you don't know what the response from Waze would be about routing people
Yeah.
through that area. So you think, well, all we need to do is if if we're not enforcing it, let's take it down. But I don't think you're thinking of the consequence of what happens when the mapping programs start to
Send people that way.
People that way, so.
Don't get me, don't get me wrong, I'm not, I'm not advocating the uh end of those restrictions. I think they should be enforced, but since they're not being enforced and compliance is uneven, then then why even go through the uh the charade of trying to uh discuss or even consider enforcement? It's just, it's just not working.
Thank you.
Okay. Right, um, so you've been in the audience, so let's go on to number five. Uh Connor, you asked for this to be.
Sure, just real quick. Um the Montgomery County Public Schools, for those who have children in it or or have strong feelings about it. They've put out a survey, the survey link is in the agenda. It is looking at the proposed twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four traditional school year calendars. They've actually proposed four of them, which is, you know, part of why I wanted to flag it for the community is these, there's some radically different. Uh, calendars here, only in that, you know, usually it's one or two, do we start two or three days apart? These have four different scenarios that could start as early as August seventeenth, which is significantly earlier than. Then we've ever really started before, uh but could start as late as August twenty-eighth. Um, ironically, the they all kind of end within the same kind of four-day window, but what they do is. Once scenario starts very, very early, uh but they do a two-week winter break at the end of December and the first week of January. One has a longer holiday break over the Thanksgiving. One has a Thanksgiving break and kind of a modified spring break, and then one has kind of too many breaks in the spring. So I just wanted to flag it for the community, uh take a look, you know, the the website, it's really easy, they give you the calendar looks, you can see what days are marked off. They're just looking for feedback, you just vote which one you like, and they will then take all of those survey results and use it. Uh, in their discussions on the calendar planning.
All right, is the P T As pushing out this survey pretty well?
Yes, so um, it's been on most all the listservs that I know I'm a part of, uh all the cluster reps have been, you know. Advocating and and asking people to sign up and so seeing it on those is what brought it in here today.
Okay, that's great, I mean, I don't have elementary or middle higher high school kids anymore, but. I'd be the one complaining if something changed and I didn't have that opportunity or didn't know about it.
And it's, the date is by November thirtieth, is that right?
So the survey is open through Wednesday, November thirtieth, um and then they will gather up all of those results and they will be. Um, looked at at the December sixth meeting, that's when the superintendent's recommendation will be coming out to the Board of Education.
Will they have a hearing on it?
The, there's a um, Board of Education's Policy Management Committee meeting is going to be on November twenty-first. So that's prior to when they will close this, but when they will discuss all four options.
Okay.
So.
Uh, council, any further comments? Anyone in the audience want to comment? Joe, I assume your hand is from the previous, is that correct? That assumption. Okay. From the town manager and staff.
The public works crew has started leaf collection, uh they'll be running through Friday, December sixteenth, uh they were able to get a jump, but the leaves were dry.
Yes.
Last week, uh. Yep, going on very well. Um, ecology accepted the one-year renewal, um, they are not asking for any additional increments at this point. Uh, there could be some tipping fee increases down the line depending on on what the county does, but uh the bill in rate increase of two and a half percent was accepted. Uh, so we will start again with them beginning January first.
Okay. Good. Um, just a minor thing, I just, um, do you want to remind you that that uh tree across on Warner Street still needs to be trimmed, like that's broken. From the gentleman fixing the fence on the parking garage.
Okay.
Actually, I I did neglect to ask the council if they had any thing they want to add. Darren, did you?
I don't have any.
And do you have anything you want to bring to the attention of council and the public?
Yes, I just want to briefly mention that the Greenscape Committee had its first meeting um in a while. And we've decided to focus on preserving and enhancing the tree canopy of the town, so we're still getting organized, but we'll have a more formal update soon.
We're having our second meeting for the green team. Um, our first was held in mid-October, um where we kicked off with this kind of initiation, see if you're interested meeting, we had a good participation. Um, we've got ten or eleven people committed, I think, to to support that effort. And one of the first things we're going to do is Sustainable Maryland designation, pursuing that. Um, so the next meeting is actually going to be on Monday, this coming Monday here, town hall, and we'll have. Should be on the list, um, it'll be with Mike Cunningham, who's the the head of the whole program at University of Maryland. He's going to come and give us um kind of some tips on on starting off, but. Some of the members already have started to do some, uh Kate DeWitt, Carolyn Morrissey and Karen Craig. And Ann and I are doing an inventory of where we stand in all eighty, ninety-plus measures or actions we can take, so we started that inventory. So that we can have a more informed conversation on Monday. And then just from the pedestrian bicycling access and safety working group, we had our Walktober event, so I wanted to thank everyone who came and Leslie was there. Darren came, so thanks Darren. Um, for the first half, I thought it was, it was a beautiful day.
It was, it was a great day.
Yeah, I think it was a successful event, so Chris Zappi, John Rogers, Alan Simon, Alison Derlin, Marla Hollander. Um, they were all really helpful in getting everything implemented, and then it was cool because we ended up at Baby Cat for. First, um, kind of like a first tour of the of the uh brewery. Um, the walkability audit process started, so we're going to do that over the next month in canvas in each segment of the town. Um, and our next meeting is December twentieth, so we should add it to the calendar, luckily it looks like there's nothing here, so.
Yeah, I'm not seeing the anything, well, it was not on the calendar, so you need to make sure um.
Yeah, we secured the map room. I've already talked to them about it, so.
Okay, so when was the other meeting, the green team is the twenty-first, and you said one more meeting, the mobility and traffic?
No, it's the pedestrian bicycle.
Oh, when is that?
It's the twentieth of December.
Okay, December twenty, okay.
And both of them will be in the map room.
Okay. Working group, so if we could add this to the calendar, so they're on our. So, so you've got, we now have eighteen events between November sixteenth and January eighteenth. So. All right.
I'm going to squeeze the D R B meeting in there somewhere. I don't have a date yet, we're working on scheduling, we've got uh just conflicting uh schedules, there's nothing, there's no application being reviewed. We just have new members, uh we want to kind of dust off D R B because we have not met in some time. Look back at our sector plan, look at Thrive because Thrive has not been passed, um and get people familiar with just what the language of Thrive is. Even though it has not changed zoning, um and then uh look at the recently completed projects. And those that are, you know, in the county planning process, so just kind of level set the whole new committee. So no date yet, um when, I I will put it out on the neighborhood list serve and obviously on the calendar. Uh, once it's set, it will be after Thanksgiving somewhere in this jumble of.
Of dates, uh maybe you might end up in January.
It might be.
Uh, so, but.
Other than that, uh Nate touched on it, just a couple of things, uh just a welcome to Baby Cat Brewery, which opened. They had their official ribbon cutting last Thursday.
What a good turnout of uh elected officials.
Success has many parents, um, it was, it was, and you know, I said this at the time, I was I was talking with one of the the owners of it. Um, they are, they've been very honest and transparent that they, you know, opening this business in Montgomery County was not easy. They have had a number of challenges, and part of the reason that there were so many elected officials there is. There were people at every level of government who helped get this this business up and running, obviously the the council and and mayor. Tracy has been hugely supportive, but we've had to, you know, increase our liquor license count, so we went back to our delegation at. Uh, the state legislature, there's been issues with um permitting and and W S S C. And we reached out to our District One Councilmember and some of the at-large council members who are terrific and helping. Um, so there really has been at all levels of government um help with our partners. So it just shows we're building those relationships, the you have advantages that it's bringing our business community, but it was a wonderful opening. Um, they have had a hugely successful uh first couple of weeks. Um, they've just, they pass along their huge thanks to the community, um for people coming out, being, you know, hugely supportive of it. It's exactly what they envisioned, um, they have bicycles and strollers strewn about and it's, it's very much a neighborhood. Um, um, community building spot, which did bring about, you know, a challenge that they're having with Montgomery County Transportation to get bike racks. Or to get patches for parking strollers, so we talked about um the town supporting by just pouring some concrete. They can get the racks, the county won't provide the concrete to attach them to. So, um, you know, Tracy and I, the ribbon cutting, talked to them about the fact that we, we happen to pour good concrete. And and so, uh, I happened to see Jason there, fresh off of his trip, um, and now we just, we we need to get. The schematics from them, what they need, what they want, and we'll work that out.
They need chainsaw or.
We're working on that too, so.
Got Yosemite Sam upstairs, they can know.
So, um, the uh, so that that was terrific, um, should I have anything else? I think that was it.
Well, just to add it on, I did not know that Councilmember Hans Rehner was behind bringing breweries to Montgomery County. I did not know that.
Yes.
Yeah.
And his, a lot of his work with the uh Montgomery County Food Council. And their made-in-milco program, it, you know, he's helped support a lot of that to. You know, he, where they can source some of the raw materials within the county, they try and make those connections, but yeah, they. They did a very good job talking about how beer specifically is an agricultural product and um its connection back to different parts of the county.
Yeah, well, I have to say, uh, last Saturday, I got a call from a resident from the Northside saying, hey, I'm down at Baby Cat, come on over, so I came over. But the um, the diversity of age, you have the the people that are, you know, twenty-one, but you know. And then you have the couples with their kids are there, bring, you know, juice and snacks for their kids and they're having their beer. And then you have the older set like me, you know, that's there, and it's just, it was kind of cool that, you know, just the diversity of age. Uh, that, you know, people are just coming in and just sitting there chatting and talking.
Playing in the mud.
They're supposed to be putting in grass this week, um, they did lay the patio, which is is nice, so, um. But yeah, I think um. Somebody had ordered uh fish and chips from Dish and Dram, and that was like, hmm, next time I'm going to do that.
It was nice, um, because Talia's was there.
Talia's, they have sandwiches in a refrigerator and, yeah, you can order from Dish and Dram and, um. I think they're going to have some food trucks that are coming in.
Yeah, they have a schedule upcoming of of doing kind of pop-up food trucks, Talia's will actually have a kind of a. Their own little pop-up there.
Right.
During the weekend, okay, that was this week, but, um, so yeah, the, you know, their vision not having a kitchen was to try and keep it hyper-local.
Support and give another platform for our local food uh establishments. And so I know they've talked to Frank Lee and others, same thing, just trying to build out what works for each of them.
Frank needs to just put another oven in, you know, outside, he'd be all set.
So, um, the only other one was I did, I went to what should be the final large concert of the season for gigs. This past Saturday, um, you know, it was well-attended, again, well-respect uh respected by the neighborhood. It shut down at nine P M, um, they did a very good job of making it end on time and, uh, uh. You know, policing up and and watching everybody as they go to make sure that, you know, nothing left the establishment with them. Uh, I would say most everybody walked down Howard.
Towards Baby Cat.
Right to Baby Cat, um, so, but a big thanks to Sean Geiser and Olivia and the whole crew there, they put on a wonderful show. Smiles around everybody's faces, um, really well done, you know, again, another great addition to our nighttime economy.
What's next with this urban noise district?
So, we don't have anything formal, but I think wait till the the council gets seated and and on December fifth. Um, Tracy, I know, and I have, we've talked to all of these members, when we've talked to them at the the ribbon cutting too. That we really want to move forward with a discussion on this, so once they're set, um, at least from our standpoint, I think, reaching out to our. Um, to Councilmember-elect Stuart.
Yeah, with the exception of, of Kate, I have not spoken to any of the new county council members that have come on board. But um, all the older ones that are staying, uh, we can talk to.
Yeah.
So, um, I think we can.
Yeah, and and Kate Stewart with Silver Spring also being in District Four, you know, this is something that I know she.
Well, in North Bethesda.
Yeah, Pike and Row, so she's got a big part of the nighttime economy district.
Yeah. So, yeah, they're gonna, you know, get sworn in on the fifth, and then, you know, I think we're. It started again, so, okay. Um, let's see, any hands or anyone in the audience has a question regarding what are some of these reports we've made? Any follow-up questions, where? Is this regarding one of, one of our questions, what we've been talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, great, great. Just say your name and your street.
Jonah Chen, I live on Day Avenue, um, I was wondering what is the green team and are there any service opportunities?
Yes.
Good question. Yes, absolutely. Trip four thirty-nine, so, and are you here for Boy Scout uh for a badge, is that?
Um, yes, I have to do this for a badge back also.
But you really want to do it.
Well, thank you so much for that question, um, the green team is a newly formed committee in town. And we're working together to improve the town's sustainability and to seek certification from a state program called Sustainable Maryland. So we'll be examining the town's practices and opportunities to improve energy efficiency. Support local economies, stormwater management, um, there's a list as, as Nate said, of ninety-some actions. We are very eager to involve um students as part of the committee, we already have. At least one high school student committed, possibly to, possibly three. Um, and we can arrange to provide S S L hours as part of this, so, um. Please, uh, we can give you our contact information, our information is also on the website and you can email us.
What grade are you in?
Um, I'm in ninth grade.
At where?
I go to Blair.
Okay, fantastic.
Good.
All right.
Is that something that like trip four thirty-nine could actually get involved in? I mean, as a group, you could give them a project.
There might be.
There might be a question for Mike when you meet with him.
Yeah, okay, we can, we can discuss.
On how you could get that, because I think having the troop leaders might, there might be an opportunity.
Yeah, well, there are, there are actions that relate to the local schools and children's wellness. And I imagine that there's room for demonstration projects with civic groups that involve students, but we'd have to see. What's been done, and it's one of the things we can talk to Mike about.
Right, okay, just an opportunity for the kids, good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Right, so, uh, let's move on to um public appearances. This is the opportunity to, for the public to bring up anything that's not on the agenda, Leslie.
Uh, Leslie Olson, so my uh comment is about um Saint Paul Park. And um, everything that's been done there is is really nice. Um, I noticed recently that uh that uh that park, as well as I understand, other parks are getting cameras. And um, there was, um, we're beginning to look a little like a temporary construction site. And I'm not sure what part of this is permanent and what isn't, you have all these electrical boxes and apparatus behind. Um, the, a planter near the Kensington Park sign right there, kind of at the intersection of Wheatley and, oh, uh, Saint Paul. Oberon and Saint Paul, and um, now we have a a wood post-up and um, over there by the um. Pavilion as well as um, right there by a tree, it it just doesn't look. Um, it looks temporary and it doesn't look very professional, and I, and I do see that there's been concern about activities. And there's an interest in um, kind of honing in on what and who might be causing some problems in different areas of the town. But, um, so could you talk a little bit more about what the thoughts were and why we've ended up with? With a look that could have been much more, um, I think subtler or. Professional looking.
I'm going to let our town manager, because she was one that worked with the placements.
We've had a number of incidents, uh, one is more known to the public than some of the others. Um, the issue we have is we have an agreement with Spring Bilingual for a camera in the park, that camera um only captures the playground equipment. Uh, we needed security cameras that captured the broad spectrum of the of the park. Uh, there are some requirements for the cameras, they need to be a certain height, so they can't be vandalized, uh, one of the utility boxes that was installed. Uh, one of the utility boxes that was installed is the Comcast, because we need, uh, access for modem, for internet to feed it back to Town Hall. Um, and the posts were put in locations where we could get the greatest visual of the parks. So there are two posts, uh, there would be two cameras. And, um, there'll be twenty four hour surveillance on St. Paul Park, Clum Kennedy Park and Reinhardt Park.
Matt, there's still more improvements to be made in those posts, though. They're gonna be painted, there's.
The posts we, will be painted, uh, like a dark green, uh, to kind of blend in with the shrubbery, at least with the one post behind the St. Paul Park. Um, you know, we looked at fiberglass posts, they weren't even remotely within our practice range. Um, so we went forward with, uh, just a standard wooden post. You know, the, for the fixtures, at least for the short term are permanent, so.
Um, so the final painting is to take place, it didn't look like there are cameras right now.
There are not. No, we, we do not have the cameras installed yet. Uh, we don't have the modem installed. It's, you know, in the process.
And so is there a timetable for when the posts might get?
We are meeting with the electricians tomorrow at St. Paul Park. Um, that is the park that's the furthest along. Uh, hopefully by the end of the year, we'll have a camera there. Uh, Clum Kennedy, uh, will follow. And then Reinhardt is last in line, because they do not have power currently.
So the cameras would have to go up before something could be, so the, before the posts are painted, or?
The, the posts can be painted at any point, so.
Okay, I, I just think it detracts. I, I understand the principle, but we've put so much time and money into all the other features of the park um, with the pavilion and all the subtle details. And this seems just a bit rushed and out of character with, um, with the time and effort we've spent on really having the parks look good.
I think at a point, you don't see them anymore, you just kind of get used to them being there. I mean, unfortunately, this is the way of the world. And even our small town gets affected. Um, and the first thing out of a police officer's mouth is, do you have a camera? Because that's about the only way you're gonna catch someone. We had an incident last Saturday where we had teenagers put firecrackers into a small refrigerator in the one oh four hundred uh, garage and it exploded. And there's no campus. So there's no way, you know, they were going around and knocking on doors for people's rings. And, you know, to see if they could get anything. They didn't.
It's not so much about the cameras as the apparatus.
But unfortunately, the cameras require those apparatuses. And they, it's very hard to hide them and you have to put them in a place. I mean, like they're at Flynn Park, we have cameras at Flynn Park. They're up high, the trees mostly cover it. But, you know, they're there, they're on a pole, um, and they're, they're in sight. And, but it's one of those things that you just have to get used to.
I think part of it, I mean, listen, we live around the corner from each other. It's just that they're stark, raw timber posts. This is just, we're midstream. Um, once they're painted, um, you know, next spring, you know, there might be some landscaping. Like, two things, there's very limited places that they can be put, because they have to be able to connect to power. And they have to be able to connect to where the modem going up. And in fact, I applaud the town, uh, near, a neighbor nearby who faces his house had wished that it wasn't where it was located and, and they actually moved it. They painted safely, taken out of the concrete and moved it in order to hide it as best they could behind the trouble. Once you're painted, I think visually, you'll, they will fade away into the background. I agree, you see them, they're there.
Is there, there are cameras by the pavilion. Is, is that a wood post that's been painted?
Yes, it was painted black. Yep.
So.
And that was chosen because of the black pillars that are on the pavilion that it would just kind of fade away into the, so.
Okay, but that's not a metal post, that's a, a wood, same idea. So painting it will make it look.
Yeah, it'll just visually blend right into the, those trees right there.
We, we did not have the authority from Pepco to use the utility pole. Like, uh, council member Crim stated, we're limited on where we can place it, and he's next to the power source. And we're kind of working with what we have.
Okay, all right, that sounds like.
I just would say, um, thank you Leslie for, for raising that question. And, um, Connor, you mentioned landscaping and there might be an opportunity to do more with the trees and that small trees, whatever it is.
A committee that was gonna look at our tree skin and tree canopy.
To, to help with camouflaging it a bit or not making it as prominent in that space.
Yeah, I mean, trees, you know, you don't want them to block the cameras. So I know in Flynn Park, we had to trim the trees a couple of times, because you're capturing more leaves than you are.
Now, with those green, I'm not good with trees, those green ferns that are on the other side, you know.
Yeah, there are things that can be done.
Yep. Yeah.
Yeah. So, um.
If we put another, you know, because those are like six, seven foot tall and the cameras taller than that, you know, they would just be hidden in those trees and then.
Close to fourteen feet, so.
I find my kids hiding in those trees.
Okay, uh, Joe, I see your hand up.
Yes, indeed, thank you. Um, I just want to make a couple of comments about the town's leaf collection. It's, it's, uh, very tough work and it's been done well and, uh, some kudos to the, to the team. I, I just wonder a little bit about the timing. It, it seems like it was a little later this year than in previous years, maybe I'm wrong, but it seemed like it was a little later. And, um, that, uh, we have had, I, I noticed that, um, nearby towns like Chevy Chase View had begun the, um, their leaf collection the week before Halloween. So I just wondered about the timing. It's not a criticism, it's just a question.
We, we take our leaves to the county and that's when the county opens up their leaf drops. I don't know what Chevy Chase View does, they may just take it directly to the dump.
Private contractors, they, they might take it to the transfer station, they might have an out, a different resource outside of the county. Uh, we follow Montgomery County, ours is taken to the county and they started, um, last week, it was the seventh.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, so would not be possible to, to start it earlier or a date other than what the county has set? Is that essentially it?
If the council wants us taking the leaves outside the county.
No.
No.
Well, that's not what I'm asking. Is it, is it, uh, the, the schedule is it picked, is it driven by what the county is, is essentially driven by what the county decides when the pickup will begin?
That's correct.
Working, okay, simple question, thanks. Um, I, I think I heard the town manager make reference to citations being up. And this was at a portion of the conversation of the, of the meeting, I, I didn't hear terribly well. Uh, is that, does that have to do with, uh, wha- what is that reference to?
So we've asked our officers, we have three police officers under the secondary employment agreement with the F O P of Montgomery County Police. Uh, we've asked them to enforce stop signs through the end of the calendar year at the recommendation of the Mobility Traffic Committee. The feedback we're receiving from our officers is that they are issuing, uh, a number of warnings and citations more so than they would have on the time restrictions for cut through traffic or, uh, other primary offenses that we've asked them to monitor previously.
So, okay, so do you have a, a count of, of how many citations have been issued? If, if they're up, they're up by what? What is the, or the data?
So typically, we'll see the officers issue maybe, you know, two to four warnings a week. Uh, last week, I think we issued six, the week before that, I think it was almost eight, I'll have to go back and look. But they were, they were quite a bit more than what we normally get on the enforcement.
Okay, and two to four, is that for the whole team or is that per officer?
That's usually a, a week, yeah, for, for all officers.
Comparted together, okay. Great, and, and finally, for the town manager, uh, any updates, anything you can tell us about the Southside Bridges project that have been, that has been, uh, sort of, I guess, on hold for a while?
Uh, it's not on hold, uh, we're working with the W R Engineering on the schedule. Uh, they are supposed to provide us with the preliminary R S P for review by the end of this week. Uh, I reached out to Scott for contact. Um, he, I got an out of office response, so hopefully we'll hear back from him tomorrow. We'll have an opportunity to review that. If we have any changes, they'll make the corrections, then it will be posted. Um, and we're hoping to have a project engineer, uh, by maybe early to mid-January.
And then on an optimal timetable, we'd be looking at construction or reconstruction or whatever work has to be done, beginning about when? Roughly, in the spring, maybe?
Depending, oh, no, uh, maybe depending on the E P permitting, we're probably twelve months out.
Twelve months from the time the, the project manager is designated.
At best, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
You can go to the front and just give your name and your street.
Come on, shut.
It's not that exciting.
Not that, not that rigid, I hope. Uh, Larry Wanamakers is my name. I live in, uh, the Hammond Wood neighborhood, uh, College Drew Avenue over that way. Um, and I don't consider myself an artist, but I love art. And one of the primary media that I've used myself in some previous, uh, public art, um, opportunities, uh, was old used materials. I love Mother Nature's weathering process to me is the best, one of the best artists out there. And when I, and I love the town of Kensington. So when they took down the, uh, cement factory, was it cement factory is that they?
They did mix.
Plant, flex factory, I never knew what they really called that. Um, when they demolished it, I went there afterwards and retrieved as much of the remnant metal as I could. Took home two carloads of it and, uh, assembled the things that I sent you. Um, and those are, that's just, that's probably maybe eighty percent of what I have. The, my apologies, first of all, to the mayor, because she and I spoke with her about this several months ago and she informed me that probably wouldn't be a good idea because of the, you know, the unavailability of some land, which I thought would be ideal for this. But I've spoken with other people, basically, um, merchants in the community here. And they urged me to, they really liked the idea and urged me to come back to the council for a council and see what, what they might be able to, uh, come up with a way of support for something like this. Um, this was, by the way, I was looking through some old materials the other week and cleaning out basically. And I came across a budget item from, for the town back in, I think it was oh seven. If I'm not mistaken, they had set aside, you know, some of money for this particular project. So it was, it was considered back at that time. I put them in my backyard and I've enjoyed them all these years. But, um, I, I'm, I'm ready to get them where other people can see them and enjoy them as well. But I, I like them for a variety of reasons, one of which is they're, they're unique. Um, they're based on the history of, of Kensington. Um, and I think there's some lessons to be learned in the approach they take to making art out of trash, basically. Um, recalling history, uh, all sorts of topics of discussion they might, you know, engendered between parents and children as far as what, what good can be done with something bad or something useful, useless. Uh, evolution, I mean, it's all, there's so many, so many things that could be topics of conversation that this might, these eyes, these might generate. Um, plus, I think they would put Kensington more on the map than it already is for its art. Uh, I love to see a community, I love living in a community and I'm attracted to a community that respects art and, and, and has some for, for the people to enjoy it. For the people to be attracted by. Um, so I think, um, trying to think, oh, what I have, you've seen what I have. I have some other things I couldn't really photograph yet, because they're mentally only, but I have enough pieces that I could make uh, a large wind chime. Uh, that could be either, uh, motivated, moved, banged by the wind itself. Or I could set it up where I have a, I have a large cylinder from the factory as well, of course. Uh, that could be used, I've set up a system using three poles that would be, go up that, you're trying to use your, is your most stable form there is, stable structure there is. So you have three poles coming up and these pieces would be suspended from the apex of that triangular pyramid, if you want to have a better word. And you could actually have people being able to, through a cord system, a cable system through the pipe. You could have people be able to, you know, ring that chime, if you will. Um, and you could control the volume simply by putting two knots in a cable and make it so that you can't slide that thing more than this far. But, um, that would be another thing. And, um, I also had another piece that I set up over here on the table about railroad, you, based on the railroad history. Railroad meets to Kensington is really a unique thing. What I've done there is I've taken, uh, railroad ties and made it, if you look down on it, it's a di- be a diamond shape like this. And you would alternate them, so that you would have, you know, you would have a, a railroad tie, railroad tie space, railroad tie, and just, you know, have four sides with alternating, uh, horizontal structures. On the inside of each of those, of those, I would, I would put a mirror. And that, the mirrors can be, you can get those in metal or glass, either one, have a mirror on the inside such that when you look through this you see all of Kensington. You see yourself in the opposite side, but you see through to the background. You see reflect everywhere, it would be this reflection, uh, paradise, as far as I'm concerned, in terms of what it would generate, but in terms of a location. Yeah, my thinking was up at the top of the, the hill there, near the crossover for the, for the train tracks on the parking lot side. Um, and as far as the other things go, uh, my, my initial idea was to have them resurrect from where the, the cement factory once stood. And I think the mayor mentioned that that is owned by the, uh, railroad.
No, no, it's owned privately.
Oh, it's private?
By Conterra.
Oh, by Conterra?
Yes, they own it. So we are, we have a lease agreement for the dog park.
Okay, okay, okay. Well, perhaps something, some work could be done, you know, if, if you were to want it.
Well, it's certainly something we could consider. Um, most of our community art, with the exception of the wood carvings, which were done by our Public Works director, who installed them and placed them in, you know, a concrete.
A gentleman from Australia?
Yes, um, so he, he did all of that work himself to make sure that the structure would, would stand and not fall over. You know, and journey ones. Um, our community art has been on private property. So it has been an agreement with private property. And of course, it doesn't take up the foot space or, you know, it's, it's on a, a wall, but, so, um, so, but it's been, you know, done with, with those agreements. So, um, I mean, your type of art would be good in like a sculpture garden. Which we've, we've not created.
No, I, that would be a good.
Yeah.
I think I, it would be nice to have it all together, because they do, the forms are creatures.
Right.
Their populations, their, there's one that I even call Audrey, because it's, it's Audrey Hepburn in that classic
Right.
white dress, you know?
Yes.
Uh, but, uh, yeah, there's just all sorts of stories that people could like about what goes on there, wonder about. Um, and it comes out of perception too, because everybody perceives something and sees something different in it. And, you know, that's, that's, I think, a stimulating thing to do with art, rather than just look at it and say it's pretty.
Right.
Um, so I think it's, I think it would be unique, I think it would be, I can see a newspaper article about the uniqueness of it. Uh, that sort of thing, I, I think.
Well, where they sit in your backyard, they probably sit free standing. And so you don't worry about, A, somebody taking them and B, some child tripping over it and cutting themselves. So those are the types of things that we would have to think about.
Of course.
That they would have to be placed in a manner that somebody couldn't just walk away with them.
I've already, I, the final thing I thought about in terms of, uh, these would not be mounted. They don't need to be mounted. What I would do is have a, a pit filled with rock, heavy rock. And these things would be stabilized in those pits, that would allow drainage. Uh, so that you don't have to, plus it would put them at ground level where they belong. Uh, if they're, you know, emanations from what used to be the factory. So, that would, but now the security issue would be another issue. I'm, and I, I cannot imagine what you, you would, a fence or some sort of barrier, uh, to protect these things, you know, or protect people from.
Well, I wouldn't have thought you needed to protect a refrigerator either, but. Well, I wouldn't have thought you needed to protect a refrigerator either, but decided to blow it up. So, you know.
Or playground, a simple.
Or a playground.
I don't know that we can make a decision.
No.
I, I think you're great ideas. I, I've looked at your stuff. I love the one that's a tribute to your dog. I love the creativity.
Tribute to what?
I think you said you've made one as a tribute to a former dog of yours.
Maybe that was Jason.
No.
There's, there's one that, that's very cat-like.
I, okay, maybe.
All right, you're ruining it for him because he likes dogs.
Yeah, I was, I was on board until now. I would just like to figure out a way that we can sort of, you know, develop this as an idea without.
Sure. Yeah, I'm, I'm local, you know. You know, think about the railroad tie one as well. And I've got some other ideas for basically architectural art. I used to go to committee there and always been fascinated by, but buildings can be pallets for a lot more than just painting. Pallets for sculpture. You can take a, you can take a coil, a roll of, of flashing, roof flashing, aluminum roof flashing. And suspend that in a, in a vacant space with lighting and it's, it's incredibly beautiful piece of work.
Right.
Very simple, very safe, very secure, very weatherproof as well. There's a perfect place for that in the building on the corner. But anyway, I'm here. You've got information for me and I'd be happy to, you know, discuss this. Thanks, Larry.
Thank you. Your attention.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else for public appearances? I know.
Sorry, a sign.
For public, for the ordinances or resolutions? No? That's usually for hearings, not for resolutions. I'm not seeing anybody here and I'm not seeing anybody online, so I think we're ready to move on. I know there are people on the, on the Zoom who are interested in number one and are anxious to, to get to that. So Matt, you want to?
Mayor, before you, the CV is resolution number R dash zero six dash twenty two. A resolution of the Mayor's Council of Kensington, authorized in the town manager to stop pushing a corner clearance prohibitions on the south side of Carroll Place from the projected west curb line, Hadley Place, to a point fifty feet westward. The second location would be on the west side of Hadley Place from the projected south curb line of Carroll Place, forty feet southward. And the third location for a clearance would be on the south side of Montgomery Avenue from the projected east curb line of Hadley Place to a point twenty five feet eastward. The council first saw this recommendation back in March. We tabled the discussion and we brought it back for the council this evening after the recommendation of the MTC to move forward with our traffic engineers' recommendations for this intersection. We have a number of residents on Zoom that may wish to comment.
And I, I didn't hear you just, the Mobility and Traffic Committee also discussed this at their meeting and they recommended that we.
They actually received a complaint from a resident of the town. It's not the first complaint we received on this intersection, but we did bring it to them upon reviewing the recommendations from Joe Koutro, our traffic engineer. The MTC is recommending the council move forward with establishing the clearance prohibitions.
Okay.
At each location.
So just to be clear, because that is kind of the way we like to, like to run it through the residents committee and then bring it to the council. We don't have to act on it, but it did get to the. All right. Does anybody on the call wish to speak to this resolution? Just raise your hand or just give your name.
Mayor, we did provide the resolution in advance to the three residents that would be affected the most by these. There was some communication via email.
Okay. Daisy has her hand up. Daisy?
Hi there. Sorry, I'm in a car, so I don't know if you can hear me, but I was just wanting to be reminded of, I know we talked about this in March and I can't remember all of the details, but we had also talked about the traffic committee evaluating stop sign, like making that a three-way stop. I'm not opposed to the, to the speed hump. I'm just not sure that it solves some of the problems, which is, or I, my experience with speed humps is you speed up after the speed hump, which is exactly where the problem is. So I had said something about making that a three-way stop a long time ago because it is an awkward intersection, irregardless of the viewpoint. But I hadn't, I don't think we had any resolution or conversation about what the traffic committee said about that.
Joe, talk about.
Yeah, so our traffic engineer is not advising always stop at the intersection. It does not need code. It does not have the volume of traffic to justify an always stop. He believes that the corner prohibitions, along with some vegetation management, would resolve the issues. The MTC is aware of the always stop option. What their recommendation was when we first brought it to them was to try these corner installation for the prohibitions first and see how it proceeds.
Okay. And then. Oh, the, the, the speed humps, that would just require a petition by so many residents in that area. So.
The council received a request at the March council meeting about speeds. We did conduct the traffic analysis. We did determine that a speed home would be appropriate between ten to eight and ten to ten Carroll Place. The traffic analysis did determine that almost five percent of the vehicles are exceeding twenty five miles per hour. The max speed recorded was thirty miles an hour. Considering that we've lowered the speed limit within town maintained streets to twenty, the traffic engineer is recommending a speed hump, which would require a petition from the law before proceeding.
Okay. Daisy, did, did your question get answered?
Well, I just, I guess I sort of want to further understand the stop sign regulation. I know that perhaps there's not enough traffic, but it's not just about traffic. It's about pedestrian safety in that area and that there's a problem of people coming up that street and not being able to see that I don't even know, once it's resolved because of the hill situation, he can actually see very well. So I understand the amount of traffic dictates this, but aren't there other things that dictate whether you make four-way stops or always stops, not just traffic?
Yeah, so Joe Koutro thinks that the vegetation management is number one issue. He, he's, he's telling us that the evergreens need to be removed, followed by the corner prohibitions. His concern with the always stop is the same concerns that he's had with the Howard faucet that always stopped.
Right.
Where you're going to put in a stop sign and because it doesn't need code and you're not needing the vehicle requirements for it, you're more likely to have vehicles to go right through the stop sign, which would actually increase the risk factor of the intersection than not having them at all. He has discussed that with us internally at length.
And so the, the people coming up Hadley would be under this.
Assumption.
Assumption that the people coming from down Carroll Place would actually stop.
Correct.
And when they might just.
It would be the same risk factor of why we found often an always stop out at Howard.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't think we're close to it. I think that we want to try.
It just seems like a much cheaper approach to a problem than taking down a lot of trees and putting up new trees. So I was just aware, wondering if there was, you know, saving everyone money. If there was a cheaper way to see if we could minimize the risk for the town and see how it, how it was, how it went before we go tearing down a bunch of trees.
The trees obstruct the sidewalk already and trimming them back to open up the sidewalk.
They have been pruned back since our March discussion. The residents did prune them back. So there is clearance on the sidewalk.
I just drove by this weekend and I thought they still went out.
They might have grown back, but they did. I, I know the, I know the beavers definitely from the back. The issue.
I just pulled up in front of my house and they're trimmed and I might light throw on them and you can, the sidewalk is clear. So they are trimmed. You can get by on the sidewalk right now.
So Dr. Beavers is, he has his hand up, so.
So a couple of things, just for clarification, well, there are several questions we have for clarification. Is the, is the suggestion that all of the trees be removed or the ones on Hadley?
It was, it was most, most of them, Dr. Beavers. I, I can go back and check with Joe Koutro, our traffic engineer. There's a radi that you would need to have from the street level. I can have Joe kind of mark that out for us. You and I did talk earlier this summer about possibly removing them and replanting them with a non-evergreen. But I can have Joe kind of get on site, see how many trees and which trees would need to be removed.
So the reason why I, I asked that is that, and I haven't taken out my measuring stick, but the trees that are on Carroll Place are on private property, I believe. And the sidewalk to the curb is the right of way, belonging to the county or state or whomever or the town. The trees on Hadley, however, I understand are very close to the curb and probably are within the right of way. Those trees serve two purposes for us. One is privacy and the other is protection. And even though we spoke earlier in the year about removal, it wasn't removal without replacement. And the reason why we want them replaced are for those two primary reasons. So I understand the, the safety of the community is of prime importance, but those two reasons I just stated are of prime importance for our residents, meaning one oh one oh four Hadley Place. So we need a little clarification for that because I, if this resolution passes, it's got to be that we're going to put something in its place because of those two reasons. And we would like to work with the county or the town with us to make sure that safety is, is still at the forefront, but those two reasons are still there as well.
Okay. Dr. Beavers, we're looking at the aerial GIS, which shows the boundaries of the property line. The evergreens are clearly located within the public right of way. I'd be happy to meet you on site to go over this with you. But as we discussed previously, we would work with you. The evergreens, if they were to be removed, we would, we would help and pay for the planting of new trees. We do not allow plantings of evergreens in the right of way. It's a longstanding policy of the town dating back about ten years because of sightline issues we've had, not only in this location, but other areas of the town. But we're happy to work with you on any removes of the vegetation.
So, so what, what is the distance for right, right of way?
It varies depending on.
Yeah. So if you're looking at a four-foot sidewalk there, it looks like it's going back at least another three or four feet behind the evergreens on Carroll Place.
I can show you on the screen, Alex.
So it's not distance from the curb to the property, it's distance from the sidewalk?
So unfortunately, the road's not always built in the middle of the right of way. So if you have a standard foot right of way, typically you would have maybe twelve feet on either side of the road. But every street's slightly different. Councilmember Crimmins is sharing his screen right now. You can kind of see a blue line. The blue line is the line of demarcation between public right of way and your private property. So these trees would fall under the public right of way and maintenance of the town of Kensington.
And so the, the trees on Carroll Place, are they also within the town's right of way?
Yes, based on the aerial GIS, they are completely, it looks like Hadley's completely in the right of way. And, you know, anything, anything within the right of way on vegetation falls under the responsibility of the town and the state's tree, tree order from nineteen eleven.
Okay. And you said for about ten years, there's been a resolution not to have evergreens at the corners. Is that correct?
So when we had the issues with Pepco and trees within the right of way, we started to kind of abide by the state of Maryland's tree list. And we stopped allowing plantings of evergreens within the right of way because we have had issues similar to this. There are a couple of evergreens on the state list. We do not allow them to be planted in the right of way. We do allow them to be planted in town parks or away from the street where there's no sightline concerns.
So I completely understand the recommendation of the official who made the, who, who stated that the trees need to be removed, but I think that's going to be part of the solution. It's not going to be the only solution. I drive there quite a bit and, and, you know, I'm, I understand you're trying to rely on objective data, but objectively, living here for sixteen years, I can tell you that's part of the problem. Even when those trees weren't as large and tall as they were, we still had problems. And we had young kids and we were concerned about that corner and it wasn't just because of the tree. So I, I think we're willing to work with the county, but I think what Daisy said before about the stop signs, if we're gonna, if you're gonna request, require us to remove the trees, we like more than just tree removal.
Yes, we, we will work with you. We provided you with our tree replacement list. We'll work with you to find a tree of your liking. It would be more than one. It would be multiple trees. But it wouldn't create such a hedge effect like these do and there would be clearer sightlines from the base up.
Could I ask you to include me on all emails? This is Cynthia Long. I'm.
Yes, yes, sir.
Why? One other question I had, which wasn't quite clear to me, the recommendations for, that are in this resolution pertain to the no parking locations. And I'm just curious, how were the distances from the corner determined? Because there, I guess one is fifty, one is forty and one is twenty five. Is that?
That is correct. So the distance between on the south side of Carroll Place, west of Hadley, was fifty feet. Hadley Place, south of Carroll Place was forty feet. And east of Hadley Place along Montgomery Avenue was twenty five feet. These were determined following this onsite review by our traffic engineer when he made the recommendations back in twenty twenty to the town staff and Mobility and Traffic Committee.
Yeah, that seems, that seems a little odd. Maybe it's based upon the fact that the trees are there, that it would be longer on Carroll and Hadley, but I can tell you that it's also a problem with the Montgomery Hadley interface. Because I do take that route sometimes home. And the traffic coming up from Hadley, which is not a corner where the trees are present, sometimes is as dangerous as people coming down Carroll going to Hadley. And I've had to, to hit my brakes several times because of people in Hadley, even with the stop sign being there. I don't know if they don't see me, et cetera, but it's still not, I don't think it's still adequate. I don't think it's adequate.
Council, with the traffic we're anticipating moving forward with the development, I can have Joe Koutro meet, meet everyone on site to review this and see if there's any changes or if he can make any amendments to the existing distances.
Would the, would the distance change if the trees were removed?
I don't know that answer, but Joe would be able to clarify that. And I think it would help the residents if they could meet Joe on site. Ask him some questions. He can kind of explain why he came up with the reasons he did.
And, and there is no reason why Dr. Beavers and they can't put evergreens within their own property line if they chose to. Is that correct?
They could. I mean, we probably want to check that, make sure that the sightlines are still okay before they went through that expense, but yeah, I think.
But we would replace trees within our right of way.
We would, we, we would replant trees within our, within our right of way.
Okay, but they could put evergreens further down into their yard if they wanted to.
Correct. It's subject to code, which I believe talks about fences and edges and walls within a proximity of intersection.
and walls within a, a proximity of intersection. So I'm not, uh, it's like Matt says, let, let's not blanket say, yes, they could do it. Because they're within an intersection and, and it's possible that they could not have it via above like three feet, which would give them the screening effect that he would want.
And the feedback we get from the community with this intersection, uh, is not only vehicles, but it's pedestrians, pedestrians walking on Hadley. But you cannot see them from either direction, um. You know, and I, I think it would really help if, if, if we could get Joe on site to meet with everyone at a good time and and they can, uh, ask some questions of him and he can kind of clarify why he's recommending what he's recommending.
Okay, well, I think it's a good idea to do that, um, to make sure we're all on the same page, because I think we all ultimately want safe places for people to walk and for the traffic to, um, be able to see when they're making returns and to not hit pedestrians.
Right. And I mean, we also recognize that there's a challenge, right? Even if the hedges weren't there. I mean, obviously, it's a challenge seeing around them, um, presently. But I think even in their absence, that corner is somewhat of a challenge because um, there's not a sidewalk. And the reality is, without hedges, that will become the sidewalk, um, which is fine. Um, but I think that has a lot to do with the, um, you know, the, the safe, um, safety for pedestrians.
Right, and we, and that is part of what our working group has been trying to do, is to try to get sidewalks. It's not an easy um, thing to do. A lot of our streets are narrow and adding a sidewalk would mean maybe less parking on one side of the street. So it's definitely a challenge.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I was wondering, like, if, if it could be examined as a possibility of having a sidewalk on that side of Hadley, you'd want to know that before you plant trees.
There's some vegetation issues down at Mrs. Buckingham's house and, um, the Doherty property.
Yeah, we're not suggesting putting a sidewalk on our side of the street.
Okay.
People love sidewalks on the other side of.
We already have one on our side of the street.
Yeah.
Well, and, and I, I mean, I, this isn't really part of the resolution, but I mean, that particularly the southeast corner of the, the circle is a, is a little bit of a mess. For pedestrians in particular, there's no sidewalk from but no, on, on Montgomery.
Yep, it ends.
It ends at Penny's house.
Halfway through, and so that puts people out into the street with a lot of parked cars. And, and so ideally, we would be putting in sidewalks there and we would be, you know, increasing sightlines for traffic and there's, there's a lot to do, so, yeah. Right now, it's, we're considering restricting parking near, near the intersection.
Yeah, I think it's a short term, well, I mean, it's a piece wise solution, like this is the first step, right? And then, I mean, I'd love to go on the walk too, to, to Joe. Um, but, but again, it's around Warner Circle and the mansion, um, the development there, why? Wouldn't we ask them to put a sidewalk around it?
I don't think we have any sway with them anymore. I think the project's moving forward.
Well, yes.
No, but it hasn't been designed. The, the design has not been finalized.
Well, it's at the Maryland Historic Trust, yes. I would say there's more.
There's, there's opportunity there.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, and then that could, you could have crosswalks right there at the street that are marked.
But it's within our right of way, we could.
So there's a number of, uh, a, a conversation we had earlier tonight, uh, Noise Library. Um, it is kind of dependent on what we are able to work with, one or several on. You know, can we get a crosswalk in a safer area than where we could place one right now? Uh, can we convince them as a public benefit for the project to put a sidewalk on the, in the interior of the circle? Which would clean up a number of areas, because Nate, you and I have talked about trying to find a crosswalk at Fawcett in Baltimore, and right now be, between the storm inlets and the island and the sightlines we're already having there, there's no good, there, there's, we don't have any good resources. So it's something we can definitely look at.
Yeah.
Uh, whether that project goes to the DRB or not, it's something that staff can work with the developer on within the conditions of the permit. Um, as long as the council, uh, is agreeable.
Yeah.
I would aspire that.
So what are we doing about the resolution? While we get the engineer out there?
Yeah. We'll see if, we'll see if Joe can make any, uh, alterations to the existing, um, restrictions. We'll meet with the residents on the site, um. Uh, well, I'll send an email out to everyone, kind of get, uh, a, a day in time that might work for you in the next few weeks. Uh, and then we'll have Joe, Joe meet on site and, and, uh, kind of figure this out.
Can I say one more thing? I guess one of the things is I feel like there's sort of a piecemeal approach to this, and I'm not sure that that's the best. I understand we're trying to mimic, we're trying to minimize risk, but like, I'm aware also of this whole noise thing and putting a sidewalk across the street might be interesting, but I'm not sure where the crosswalk would go to, because there's no sidewalk to go to, but, um, the speed hump and the, it's, and the changing of the traffic without sort of looking at this in a long-term approach of like, how are we really gonna do this? Seems shortsighted, and so I totally want to minimize the risk, but I don't want to just start doing things without thinking through what the long-term approach is that's really gonna change the sit- the situation.
I would, I wouldn't say that it's a piecemeal approach. I think it's an incremental approach where we want to be the least impactful as we can. Um, you know, if we put up no parking signs, they can be moved easily. If we, um, you know, sidewalks are expensive, and so I think we want to.
Say it's fairly, it's fairly impactful for the Beavers. So to say the least impactful for whom? You're, I mean, the Beavers moved into this house with this beautiful wall of trees around them, supporting their beautiful backyard. And changing that is a big significant move for them, so the least impactful for whom?
I, 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 I hear the point, but at the same time, my understanding is those trees are on public right of way. And so, you know, and, and, and I, you know, I, I, I sympathize with people who've invested, who've maintained the same thing we heard on the southeast corner of the circle. People told us they moved into their house. They, they don't want a sidewalk there because they put a lot of effort into landscaping right up to the street. And the fact is, that is town right of way. It ought to be able to be designated as sidewalk without hearing how impactful it is to people who don't own it in the first place. So I, I, you know, I, 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 I don't want to put things where people don't want them, but I, I want to provide safe pedestrian access in the area.
So I guess what you're saying, if we're gonna take a holistic approach, then claim the right of way over there as well, that you're claiming, uh, where our trees are and put a sidewalk. That would be equitable. I mean, I don't want to be harsh about this, but, um, and I don't want to be petty, and I don't want, uh, uh, this to turn into a little neighborhood spat or, um, or, um, but it, you know, uh, and thank you Daisy um, for speaking up for us, but, um, um, i- it's an issue. If you want the safety to be, uh, holistic, put the sidewalk in both sides. Um, Carol and Montgomery. And then, you know, the tree issue, uh, we're owning it, um, and thank you for, uh, um, uh, agreeing to work with us as opposed to being draconian and demanding. We really appreciate it, especially in this political climate. Um, but, um, that's a good point about the sidewalks cross, across from us.
So we'll have to walk, walk about.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, unfortunately, this is not easy. We've done this in a few other locations throughout the town. Um, you know, it's, it's one of the reasons why we've held off as long as we have. It's not an easy process. Um, we have a responsibility to protect the town on liability. Uh, we are getting complaints. We're getting complaints from not only mostly pedestrians more recently, but we're also getting the vehicle issue. Um, and we kind of have a responsibility to act. But, you know, we'll work with the residents over there to see what fits within Joe's recommendations. Can we make any changes? Is there a possibility if we keep the vegetation? Uh, I don't know the answers to that, uh, but based on past conversations with Joe, the vegetation, um, you know, he's, he's pretty adamant about it being removed.
When you set up that meeting, can you inform the council, so those of us that would like to attend, can, sure be there?
If were many of us to meet, we'd, we'd, may a public meeting.
No, we could put it on a, on a calendar that we're meeting, but otherwise, we don't need to do anything else. We could just simply put it on a calendar that we'll be meeting.
Good. Dr. Beavers, like I said, I'll send an email to everyone. Um, Cynthia, I'll definitely include you. Um, Sheila, thank you for adding her email to the, to the email. I did not have it previously. And we'll, we'll figure a date that we can meet, so.
Okay, so it sounds like we're gonna take this resolution and put it on for another month at least. All right, thank you all for attending. I know you had to wait a long time, but, uh, you're, feel free to stay for the rest of the meeting, but, um, we, you know, we'll, we'll try to work with you all. Great, let's go down to the, uh, next resolution.
Uh, Mayor and Council, before you, this evening is Resolution Number R dash twenty-nine dash twenty-two. A resolution of the Mayor and Town Council of Kensington authorizing a contribution in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars from the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three FY twenty-three budget to the Noise Children's Library Foundation for the restoration and renovation project at Noise Children's Library to town. Um, at two prior requests, um, Noise Children's Library Foundation received, uh, bond bills from the state of Maryland. And we matched them with twenty-five thousand dollar grants previously in twenty sixteen and twenty eighteen. Um, they received another bond bill earlier this year in, uh, twenty twenty-two. Um, and we approved within the FY twenty-three budget, a line item within economic development uh, to make this contribution. Uh, this is just the formal process to proceed.
So we can write a job.
Correct.
Council, any questions regarding the resolution? Is there anyone on the call that has a, uh, question regarding the resolution or a comment? Anybody? Okay, um, if there are no questions, uh, can we get a motion?
Sure, I move that, uh, we approve Resolution R dash twenty-nine dash twenty-two to make a contribution to the Noise Children's Library Foundation in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Lindsay. Okay, uh, number three?
Uh, Mayor and Council, uh, I'm gonna defer to Councilmember Lifter, uh, for Resolution Number R dash thirty dash twenty-two.
Thank you, um, Council and Mayor, before you, you have a resolution, um, that is reaffirming our uh, our stance against the bias incidents and the rise in hate crimes that we have seen, not only in our local community, uh, but throughout the county and the nation. Uh, there's been, uh, as you all know, the incident in St. Paul Park, which immediately after that happened, we have a town council meeting and we verbally denounced the incident. Um, we have worked with law enforcement since then, and we are actively planning through the Racial Justice Committee to have a community training event with the Anti-Defamation League, January eighteenth. Uh, but in addition to all of the actions that we're taking, which, which also include, um, looking for ways to work with other municipalities and law enforcement uh, to stem the rise of hate, um, we also wanted to go on record and write it uh, with how we feel as a council, and so before you, we have Resolution, um, R dash thirty, twenty twenty-two, and would ask for your support.
Uh, council members, you had an opportunity to read the, um, the draft of the resolution prior to the meeting, but if you have any other questions?
Thank you for putting us.
Yeah, thank you, yeah. Perfect.
Does anyone, uh, on the call have a question or a comment regarding the resolution? Seeing any hands?
Anyone help you on our DC with this?
Um.
Just want to make sure they get.
Yes, what, we did have, um, a, a small team working on this, Joanna Papafou, Jamie Boston, Patty Boss, um, all provided input and Lauren Morgan as well.
Just make sure they get.
Thank you.
Make sure those, they deserve, but thank you.
All right, could I get a motion?
I, I knew that we adopt, uh, Resolution R thirty dash twenty twenty-two.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Thank you very much. That number four?
Uh, Mayor and Council, before you, this evening is Resolution Number R dash thirty-one dash twenty-two. A resolution of the Mayor and Town Council of Kensington approving the new employee handbook to comply with all federal, state, and county regulations. Uh, please note, we sent, staff sent an email late this evening, uh, revising the resolution, adding, uh, language pertaining to substantially the form attached upon final review by the town attorney. Um, this will allow us to make conforming changes. Uh, Councilmember Lifter also, uh, uh, brought a federal regulation to our attention, uh, that we'd like to add, uh, without having to revise the entire.
Is that in this document that you?
Uh, it is not currently what we printed. Uh, we will have, uh, Lindsay White, the attorney, we're working with, had the federal regulation pertaining to nursing mothers.
Okay, so, uh, what's underlying is from Sue Ellen, or is that from the attorney that we had pull up this? I, I have a copy that's got lots of red marks in it.
That's the revisions.
The revisions.
Yeah, I just, that, so you saw the last corrections that I made after meeting with Councilmember Lifter and Councilmember Crimmens.
Okay.
Um, and, um, we did, and I, I include you guys, uh, a detailed email. But a number of the questions that came out of that meeting.
Okay, we don't all read our emails.
Yeah.
We're not, we're like you.
Uh, there were, there were a number of questions asked, uh, throughout the document, um, and, uh, Lindsay was able to answer all of them. And, you know, for example, there was, uh, a definition of race change in the state of Maryland, which is why we added uh, specific hairstyles within the employment agreement. Um, there is some, uh, kind of visual questions. Um, just a number of things that we were able to make changes on without, without any issue.
But just out of curiosity, how old is the current handbook?
Uh, the, the actual handbook that we use now was created before I worked here. Uh, we revised it back in twenty eleven. Uh, it was from, I believe, Donado Construction. We made some revisions to make it somewhat more government friendly, uh, but this is, this is actually, uh, the templates from University Park. Uh, and then we worked with, uh, an agency that specializes in, um, human resources. Um, I'll offer them to add additional regulations with it.
So I guess what I'm getting at is, as a good practice, that this should be reviewed yearly, every other year?
Every couple of years at least, I would say.
Just because federal government and state could be making these changes and our book should reflect that.
There's a lot of things that have changed. Uh, we completely redid our employment application. Um, and what we'll do on this is, we don't have specific benefits in it, uh, because they change every year. We're under the state's umbrella for health insurance, uh, but, uh, the staff and I will put together a benefits page every year to hand out to staff, so they'll have a better understanding of the benefits they're receiving from the state with regards to health insurance, uh, and any other, uh, benefits they're receiving from the town.
Right, so can somewhere we put in good practices that every two years that we review?
You can just make it a town policy, to do a review every two years.
I think it would be very helpful, so we're not playing catch-up, um, because this, I know this took a lot of.
This is three years, three years we've been working on this.
Right, so we should, we should just be able to review it every two years and just update it. Okay. All right, great. Um. Counselor, uh, do you have any questions?
There's just, when we, if, when we vote on it, do we have to do as amended? Anything?
I would think you would have to do as amended.
Yeah, so we added the language in there so we can make conforming changes and then add the regulation that Councilmember Lifter pointed out, so.
Okay.
We're ready for approval.
You want to get this behind you?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Um, or any other further questions from the council? Are there any questions from the, um, people online? Not seeing any hands, so, uh, need a motion?
I'll move that we adopt Resolution Number R dash thirty-one dash twenty-two in substantially the form submitted, uh, pending final review by the town attorney.
Yeah, there's a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Hi. Okay. Thank you. And I want to thank Councilmember Lifter and Crimmins for the hard work that they put in doing the review.
They read all forty-eight pages.
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much.
Yes, no problem. So in two years, you'll be ready to do it again? It shouldn't be that hard.
Want to Google that?
Yeah, next.
All using the same, yeah.
Yeah, that's probably very helpful. All right, number five?
The town staff's favorite resolution every year. Resolution Number R thirty-two dash twenty-two, a resolution of the Mayor and Town Council of Kensington proclaiming November to be Municipal Government Works Month in Kensington, Maryland.
Okay, I think Councilmember Eagle has it.
I think Eagle has an issue with this one. No.
My, my only concern is that we should be doing this in October for November. You're not allowed to.
We have to.
I feel like November is almost over.
Tried to do this in October, what, a couple of years ago? And they told us we needed to adopt it in November.
In November. Okay. But we've been flying our flag all of.
It's inner city.
Okay, good. It just seems a little silly that we're half, almost halfway through November. Okay. All right. Any questions?
You've answered them all.
Okay. And anyone online? I don't see any hands. So we need a motion. Aren't you making?
Okay. I move that we adopt Resolution R dash thirty-two dash twenty-two to decl- to proclaim November to be Municipal Government Works Month in the town.
Okay. Is there a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay. Thank you very much. Going to give one more shout out to my hometown event schedule. We've added two more things, the Green, Green Team and the Working Group to the schedule. So now we're up to eighteen events between November sixteenth and January eighteenth. And I believe Connor is looking at doing a DRB meeting. So we'll be up to nineteen.
I think I'm the two that were recently, have you, you mean, these are all on the town calendar?
The ones that are not on the town calendar would be, of course, the Committee for Montgomery's event. So, but I think everything but the Working Group and the Green Team are on the calendar. I asked Alex to add the KHS. So that's on there now. We do need to get the, the, the Racial Justice Committee meetings. Neither one of those are on the calendar. I don't, I think the one on the.
Oh, the one eighteen, probably the sixteenth should be.
But I have the wrong date on that. Yeah. The twelve fifteen?
No, that one is not up yet. Talked to Alex about it yesterday, but I'm trying to get some text.
You're trying to get some information. That's right. Okay. So yeah, we're, so we're still working on getting all of these on the calendar. But the big reminder would be our chapter meeting, which is the twelve-sixth that's up in Rockville. And then, of course, the Committee for Montgomery. Does anybody know if they are coming to that? Because we, it is a ticketed event. It's a breakfast. It starts at, I think it's seven.
Seven AM.
Yeah. And our new governor will be speaking at that event. It's a Thursday, Friday.
The Friday.
Yeah, it's always a Friday.
I planned to attend.
Okay. Because we do need hands.
Yeah. If you could just email Susan if she wanted to attend.
I believe we got a table. Is it?
We have a table.
You want to attend? Okay. So Nate?
Checking my calendar. It looks like I can, okay. And Darren, you want to make it a full, full house?
I will be tentative, yes.
A tentative? Right. Now, it's, I think it's a good opportunity for us to to see our new governor. And let's see, and then chapter meeting. Anybody know if they're going to go to the chapter meeting?
It's the sixth.
It's the sixth. Okay. So yeah, you're on the board. So, so far Tracy and Darren are going. Let me tell you the Wyndham, Ramada Wyndham, when, yeah, Wyndham is a heck of a.
Yeah.
It is buried back there in that research area. So it looks like just me and Darren. Okay, fine.
Total check for the higher power.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. But let, let Susan know.
Yep.
If you can go.
I did send an email to Susan just now on behalf of everybody who spoke up.
Okay, thank you. So she's got that, got that. So it is, it is a good event. You'll see lots of people, you know, and we are going to be doing our town council meetings in December, January, February by Zoom. Be helpful to our staff and keep us all going. And I think we'll be hanging out enough together in December on other events. Yeah. What else is on here? Yeah, our new county council will be sworn in at Strathmore on the fifth. So we will officially have a new district for Councilperson. And so I believe that's a ticketed event. I don't plan on going to that, but perhaps the event following it. Which will be local. And then so, but be sure to do the tree lighting and menorah lighting. Oh, light up K-town. I hope everybody's going to that. We are adding lights to the wall along the train tracks for the season. Okay. All right. I think, good. And we just need a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay. And we've concluded our meeting at eleven o'clock. Perhaps we could fall back on that time.